Everybody may be here.
Okay, just one second.
Yes, everyone's here.
All right, well then, I guess we are ready to start. Is Paul ready?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, um, this is Thursday, December 17th, 2020. This is an electronic public meeting of Flint City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Mr. Mayes? Excuse me, excuse me, this is a continuation of the recessed meeting from, um, Monday, December 14th.
Mr. Mayes?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Garrett?
Present.
Ms. Fields?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Mr. Greggs?
Present.
Ms. Worthing?
Present.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Um, now we go to the member remote announcement. Pursuant to the newly revised Open Meetings Act, each council member shall state that they are attending the meeting remotely and shall state where he or she is physically located, county or city and state. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, I'm attending remotely from Flint, Michigan, located in Genesee County.
Mr. Davis?
Attending remotely, Flint, Michigan, Genesee County.
Mr. Garrett?
Flint, Michigan, Genesee County.
Ms. Fields?
Attending remotely from Flint, Michigan.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I'm attending this meeting remotely from Flint, Michigan and Genesee County.
Mr. Winfrey?
Councilman Winfrey attending remotely from Flint, Michigan.
Ms. Galloway?
Councilwoman Galloway attending this meeting remotely from Flint, Michigan.
Mr. Greggs?
Attending remotely from Flint, Michigan and Genesee County.
Ms. Worthing?
Attending remotely in Flint, Genesee County.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us to member contact information. On our agenda for the public, there is contact information for every member of the council. Now I'm going to read the procedures on conducting electronic public meetings. All boards and commissions must adhere to all laws established under the Michigan compiled laws and in accordance with the revisions to the Open Meetings Act adopted in Senate Bill 1108, as passed on October 13, 2020, and signed into law on October 16, 2020. Now I will do the reading of Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 3110, Disorderly Conduct, Assault and Battery, and Disorderly Persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed from meetings. And now this brings us to resolutions. I would like to say, I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rule that requires, uh, a motion beyond the floor prior to discussion for just the water litigation discussion.
Madam President?
Uh, Mr. Winfrey?
Yes, I make that a motion that we do suspend the rules particularly specifically for the water settlement litigation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Madam President?
Ms. Worthing?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We need six votes for this. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Davis?
Yes, uh, if my memory serves me right, was Councilman Winfrey before we, uh, recessed, was right at the vote. Is this gonna be part of the discussion we're in about the vote?
This is to have some discussion. Mr. Davis, this is just to have a little bit of discussion because there's some information I need to relay to council prior to a motion being placed on the floor regarding the resolution before us.
So I can be more comfortable. Could you put it on the floor so I know which way I wanna vote up or down? A little bit of your information in this discussion?
Well, I'm going to relay information about some options that council has, um, request some other motions, which I'll, I can't discuss now. I'll have to do that once we suspend this rule. Uh, and also to convey some information, I've had a conversation with the Attorney General Dana Nessel that I'd like to relay to council.
No further questions, I'm done. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mayes?
I would yield to Ms. Galloway first.
Ms. Galloway?
Um, Madam President, I will be supporting this motion, but, um, unfortunately, because of the way that the new agenda is showing, um, when Councilman Winfrey, um, made a motion to recess, we were actually in Councilman May's special order that gave us extra time. Um, but that wasn't put on the agenda. And so, but I'll support this motion, but technically, we should still be in that special, um, request that Councilman May had giving everybody an opportunity to discuss it before we made a motion, but I will support the request that you've made today.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, Madam President, um, that's what I was thinking. Through you to Mr. Garrett. Mr. Garrett, when you made a motion, didn't we ask that it was never a second? Is that correct?
If I may estimate?
Yeah.
You know?
Yes, there was never a second on that motion.
Right, so what Ms. Galloway is saying is right, but, but this meeting, as we move forward, I'll support, um, the motion you asked to entertain and who made it, Mr. Winfrey and then Ms. Worthing seconded. Um, and so I think it's important enough to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayes. Any other discussion? Here in non-roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Greggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, one no.
Eight yes, one no, the motion carries. Okay, I wanted to say to council, first of all, and normally I wouldn't do first, but, um, uh, this time I'm going to because I need to convey this information. Okay, I'm going to ask council, I, I would like to entertain three separate motions for three separate votes prior to getting into the, uh, vote on the actual resolution. Um, and as we talk about it and as I explain it, I think you'll understand why I'm doing this. I'm going to ask for a vote to entertain a motion that council file a legal response to the settlement motion registering any objections or concerns that city council has. The second one I'm going to ask for is that city attorney, that city council gets its own attorney uh, for all water litigation and the City of Flint attorney to expedite the hiring once council identifies who we want to hire. And the third one, all three separate votes, to accept the settlement as written if the judge considers our response and then orders the settlement with no changes. And I'll repeat that again when we get to number three. So first of all, I'd like to entertain a motion to that council file a legal response to the settlement motion registering any objections and concerns, et cetera, by council. Is there, was somebody? Ms. Galloway?
Uh, Madam President, are you seeking to put a motion on the floor when we have suspended the rule specifically to speak? And, and, and I'm just asking that you would allow your colleagues to speak because we suspended the rule to have the opportunity to speak, and yet as the president, you began the very discussion with requesting motions that we don't even get to discuss because once you ask to entertain a motion, we go back to the rules. And so that doesn't give us the fair opportunity to talk about the reason why you want these done. And so it doesn't, for me, I won't support it because it, it, it just appears, Madam Chair, that you are, you've already made your mind up on what we should do as a council when we haven't had the fair dialogue to understand why this should be done, what we think about. And once a motion is made, we're limited to five minutes. And so I'm asking you, before I go any further, will you allow us to have some dialogue before you request a motion on things that you're sharing with us right now without telling us why you want us to move in this direction? It takes all nine of us to be on one floor with.
Well, I. Yes, I. I am willing to do so, but, Ms. Galloway? I am willing to do so, but I, I don't think you're necessarily correct that we go back to the rules under this, but if you think that's important, I'm willing to do that. Does anyone else like to weigh in on this?
Well, Madam President, I still have the floor. You interrupted me.
Oh, sorry. Well, I was responding.
No problem, I understand that, but we made a specific motion to suspend the rules as it relates to the resolution that's at hand. And so now you're asking us to entertain a motion based on what you decided in speaking to whoever, and I'm not saying that it's not fine, but I would say for me, I'm not gonna speak for my other colleagues, but I think it's premature for us, for you to ask for a motion, and I would be, I guess I would be surprised by even my colleagues without you telling us why you want to entertain some of these motions. The one with the attorney, I am definitely with you. Your third recommendation that the judge, um, entered, as long as the judge, I think, I think you worded it saying that you would recommend that we approve the settlement as long as the judge considers and then approves with no cha, it sounds as though it's really not a, um, ad that will really change the resolution that's before us right now. And so I, I, I'll go any way that this body wants to, but, but Madam President, you're going first and, and you're not allowing us to really dialogue based on what we, um, suspended the rules to do. I thought we were gonna do this because, in my opinion, our staff did not, um, put on the agenda where we actually were. We were in a discussion that gave us the opportunity to speak. And respectfully, um, Councilman Winfrey, um, thoughtfully recessed the meeting because we were at midnight, but we were still in that, um, arena where we got to speak at least for 10 minutes to talk about what we wanted to speak about before the resolution, uh, was put before us. And so thank you for listening, Madam Chair.
Madam President?
Ms., just one moment, I'd like to respond. Ms. Galloway? I thought we would be doing that discussion once the motion was made and we had discussion. But if this body wants to have dialogue prior to me entertaining that motion, I'm perfectly willing to do that. So I'm asking now, I'm asking council to weigh in on their opinion about how we should go about this. Ms. Worthing?
Madam, Madam.
I, I really.
Ms. Worthing and then Mr. Mayes?
Point of, point of order.
What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
Um, Madam President, I don't know if you remember, but actually you had called on Councilman May and he yielded to me. And so he actually was next. I don't know if you remember that.
No, I don't. Ms. Worthing, would you yield to Councilman May first?
Sure.
Okay, Councilman May?
Ms. Worthing, I can appreciate that. Um, I thank you guys because that's how I want this meeting to go today. This is a very serious meeting. I heard council members weigh in in the last meeting about some type of independent counsel from all the other attorneys, um, because council has some legal questions. And I've got some legal questions. When I look at the resolution, you know, this resolution has Miss Wheeler's signature. It has, I think, Amanda's signature, Clyde Edwards' signature, and a blank spot for the President of the Council, Ms. Fields. I've got a legal question about that. Um, I think that should be the mayor's signature. This resolution gives Mr. Edwards power to settle these important lawsuits. And I, I don't know if I even like the resolution with the way it's worded. Anybody who reads it knows that we're agreeing to a overall settlement by putting in with it. I like the word objections because that's a legal thing that can happen, and I'll get into that more later. I appreciate you yielding, Ms. Worthing. Ms. Fields, I think Ms. Galloway is right, and I think you're right. If we weigh in on it, then we can decide which order we take them in and so forth and so on. And then, as we talk, we'll understand it better as we get ready to make the motions. I do want this council to hear from an independent legal person. I hope that one would come first when I hear the word objections and things that need to be, you know, really looked at on behalf of the residents of the City of Flint with all of the nuances of the, um, settlement. We've done the right thing so far. We've suspended the rules. We've got a civil dialogue. Let's keep it that way and everybody relax. Thank you for yielding, Ms. Worthing.
Can I speak now?
I'm sorry, I had myself muted. Uh-huh. Thank you, Mr. Mayes. Ms. Worthing?
Yeah, I don't, I think we suspended the rules to talk about all water litigation. And I'd like to just get this rolling because I know some of us can't stay the whole time. So I, I would like to make the motion that you suggested. Um, I can't repeat it because I didn't remember exactly what it was, but I so move what you had said earlier.
Uh, Ms. Worthing, are, are you saying the, the first motion I stated or the attorney?
Um, the first motion.
Point of information.
Mr. Mayes?
Through you to Ms. Worthing. Ms. Worthing, would you mind going with the attorney first if you're gonna do that?
Okay, um, I meant the attorney.
Okay, so the motion was then, as I had said I would entertain a motion, is that city council get our own independent attorney to deal with water litigation issues and, and, um, lawsuits, and the City of Flint attorney to expedite hiring that attorney once council has identified that person or law firm. Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion, Ms. Galloway?
Madam President, Councilwoman Galloway, I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mayes?
Yeah, I've watched council for over 30 years, and I'm telling you, when a. and I'm telling you, when a counsel decides that they need an attorney because it seemed to be some overlapping issues and some clarification and they need unbiased legal information, um, I think this is one of the times that is necessary. I'll be voting yes. And, um, you know, then we must move expeditiously to talk to this person. And I hope there's no fight with the administration. I've seen us be able to, um, have counsel sometime when need be. This seems to be one of the times. Thank you.
Muted again. Thank you, Mr. Mays. Is there any other discussion?
Madam, uh, President.
Um, Mr. Davis?
Yes, uh, thanks for indulging, but I guess a lot of problems what I'm hearing. Because I thought we was in here to discuss this insurance contribution to accept it, to safeguard the city and, and the residents. Now, I'm, I'm totally confused on what's going. I'm confused and the resident, residents being more confused. What settlement and why will we change our legal counsel and forego all of this legal advice that costs this city hundreds of thousands of dollars and get somebody Johnny come lately and then an hour or two, that's going to know more than our five-year process that this department went through? What is the purpose? Somebody please help this Councilman out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other, Ms. Worthing?
Uh, hiring our own attorney just ensures that counsel as its own body, not attached to the mayor, not attached to the, um, attorneys that are attached to the mayor, um, that we have our own voice. And whether we vote yes or no on what's before us right now, I don't see the harm in making sure we are getting the best deal for the residents. If we can change something, um, if we can make our concerns known in a legal manner, because really a letter is not going to, um, be binding or, you know, it's just us writing something. If we have an attorney filing something for us, then we're, we're likely to get a lot farther. And so, and if all that attorney does is even reassure us that there was nothing we can do and it doesn't even go the way that counsel wants it, it's still an attorney that we can trust because they're working for us and only us. So I'm going to be in favor of voting for an attorney. And it doesn't mean I'm voting no on the water settlement. It just means that in this case, I believe that spending the money on an attorney for counsel is worth it. Uh, and, and it's really for our constituents because I know a lot of people are confused about this settlement. It's very confusing. The whole thing is very confusing. And, um, and, and I know that my constituents would, um, appreciate we went the extra mile just to make sure that it all goes the way that we want it to. So that's all. Thank you.
Madam President?
Uh, I believe I heard Ms. Galloway and then Mr. Winfrey.
Um, Madam President, I just want to read into the public record, section four dash six oh four, um, G of the Charter. And it says, "Special counsel for the mayor or the city council." "The city council and the mayor shall, in special instances, have the right to secure independent legal services when either deemed it necessary or proper." And so I just wanted to read that into the record to, to, for the, the, the residents and any of my colleagues to know this has nothing to do with saying that a, the attorneys are not or, or are doing, but the, the Charter gives us this right. And I just wanted to read it into the record to say that the council has a right to exercise that which is given to them in the city charter. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Mr. Winfrey?
Uh, Madam President, thank you. And I think that both Councilwoman, uh, Galloway and Councilwoman Worthing echoed my sentiment as well as Councilman Mays in the last meeting who said that the council, the attorneys, had done a wonderful job. Uh, I don't believe that, I believe that the attorneys that we have with the city have, have done a really good job here. But Councilwoman Worthing said that she believed that her constituents would really be satisfied to see us go that extra mile. I know, I know I have some constituents that feel the same way. So I, and if it's, and if my colleagues are willing to, to, to listen to another attorney and I believe that what they're going to tell us is what we've already heard, but just so that we'll have another layer of, of defense, I should say, I'm willing to vote, uh, to do this. But it's not saying that I'm voting because I don't trust what we've heard from, uh, Attorney Wheeler and Attorney Kim and others. Uh, I think Councilman Mays said it well. I think the attorneys have, have performed wonderfully. But again, not to belabor this, I, I just wanted to be known that if this is going to help our constituents, uh, understand that we're trying our best to serve them well as we were, we took an oath to do, then I'm willing to do that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Uh, who was that last time?
Griggs.
Uh, Councilman Griggs. Councilman Griggs.
Okay, I'm very conflicted on this. One, I think what we're, we're saying here is we don't really trust our city attorneys. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, the other part is how long is it going to take a new attorney to get on board with this? Um, I don't know. We're talking about more money, more time. So I'm not quite positive how I'm going to vote on this, but, uh, anyhow, I just wanted to pose those two issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. I would like to add something on my first round here. The way this was worded, it was intentional because we're dealing not only with this settlement and the water damages cases, but we still have sitting out there the EPA law litigation, the land, the Viola, and the, uh, Val- Washington overcharging of rates, um, litigation. And one of the problems why we've, in my opinion, that we've been having such difficulty with this settlement agreement is because we weren't treated as a client by our existing representation because we weren't involved in the discussions or the negotiations. We weren't informed of our rights. Um, everything was brought to us, uh, kind of a day late and a dollar short at the midnight hour. And, um, I think we are going to need an attorney to represent counsel and, um, that we can work with directly that will ensure all of that, that will ensure that we are at the table from the get-go, if possible. So this attorney would be dealing with, as per the motion, helping counsel with all water litigation. Um, anyone else like to go for the second round?
Madam President?
This is Angela Wheeler. I'm asking to be recognized at some point.
Okay, um, Ms. Wheeler, what would you like to say?
I'd like to say that one, I, one, I appreciate and respect everybody's feelings on the matter. But the fact of the matter is, is that we have had counsel for the city, which is, uh, which is aligned with the council for the last four years. And they have been representing, they have been available. And some of the council just unfortunately hasn't taken the time to meet with, with the council. And you guys act as the body. And so the times that we have attempted to do that just haven't, um, been able to do that. But even notwithstanding that, we've had the one-on-one. We don't mind meeting. I mentioned at every meeting that we don't mind meeting with you and that's what we would want to do. And we've been there with you guys in quotes and figuratively and, um, and actually in the midnight hour here at these meetings. So we've been here, um, to answer questions. We're going to continue to show up, um, to these meetings, making ourselves available, making information available to you. But like I said, this is, uh, like I said, for somebody to get in in the eleventh hour, it's, they're not going to be able to provide you what we already can provide you and, and will continue to provide you. Like I said, they, this, this is only going to prolong things beyond the deadline in the agreement, which is December thirty first. In addition to that, we provided the council with a companion resolution so that it can voice its concerns, um, in accordance with the guidelines under the actual settlement agreement to allow you to do that.
Madam President?
Just, just a moment, Mr. Mays. Are you through, Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, I can appreciate everybody in the administration of the lawyers and anybody wanting in. But this is a council discussion in which Ms. Galloway incited to write. I've been knowing about it for years. If this ain't a special circumstance, for example, let me show you something. Through you, Madam President, to Ms. Wheeler. Ms. Wheeler, Councilman Mays has a concern about just people signing off on the resolution. Why is Mr. Edwards signing off on resolutions versus the mayor in major circumstances? What's the, what's, what's the legality of that?
It's the same as it has been that the city administrator is empowered to find, um, resolution and has done so.
Let me say this. What is the legality of an agreement that brings, for example, Mr. Grisone and the due business in the city and the only people signed it was the mayor and somebody from Michigan State? That's the reason we need independent counsel. I'm not going to resurge and argue with the city attorney on when the mayor and others can sign off. And I'm not going to look at a resolution that empowers after we vote to give this, um, city administrator the right to settle lawsuits of this nature. I read good and I'm not liking the answers. So why can't I ask a lawyer to check this out for me? Because I'm looking at document and agreement over and over and the signatures. The city is the, the sign-off in contracts and in documents to me. And I could be wrong, is the mayor and the council. And so I'm concerned with some legalities. I'm also concerned with looking at the legalities that say when you put money in, um, you know, I want to see that agreement. I do need to know about, can the people who settle with this one, are they going to be still represented? And what is the legal connection for all these people that keep saying money going to come in? Because the EPA is in a different court. So, you know, even the lawyers that ha- we have access to, they coming in with an agreement already that they done agreed on. Then we see Kooker and others. They even arguing among lawyers about things. So I think we are a grown-up, co-equal branch of government. And this co-equal branch of government, you shouldn't mind living up to the Charter as we pow-wow with a, um, attorney who we can ask specific things. Uh, thank you.
Madam President, this is Councilwoman Galloway.
Ms. Galloway?
If I may, um, I think that, I just want to say, simply for the record, I think the fact that our attorney would hear us cite the Charter that gives us the right to do this, even, and, and you said it very well, Madam President. You said, "This is not the only litigation we will have." And so as a defender of the Constitution, of the Charter, of the laws, the fact that our attorney would come against us just exercising our right, um, is, is just a little bit, um, disheartening to me. Thank you. I'm done. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey first and then Mr. Davis? Mr. Winfrey?
Just briefly, as you were naming the additional water lawsuits, I think we might want to clarify, and you wa- you mentioned the Val Washington's lawsuit, but the way that you said it was the Val, uh, Washington overcharging. You may want to clarify that so that folks won't think that it's, uh, Val Washington overcharging. It's that he has a problem with our citizens being overcharged. So I think we need to clarify that so citizens won't think that he's overcharging, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Correct, Ms. Winfrey. Mr. Davis, before you speak, I, I would like to thank Mr. Winfrey for that. Yes, no, Mr. Washington's claim is that the citizens, uh, were overcharged in the water rates. Thank you. Uh, now, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam, uh, Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, to City Attorney Wheeler. May I?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Attorney Wheeler, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm totally lost right now, but I'm trying to get back in the game. I thought this here vote was about accepting the insurance contribution money and the time sensitivity of accepting this money. And I'm trying to figure that piece out.
Yes, and if I may respond. Um, and if I, if I, if I may respond, um, to that, that there, uh, there is the, um, resolution to, um, approve the, the twenty million dollars to add to the settlement. But this one thing I also mentioned is that, um, we did prepare also, um, based on our last meeting, we prepared a resolution, um, for the council to express its concerns. It was also sent out to the council today as a companion resolution to this one, um, because of, of those concerns expressed. So like I said, um, also hearing what was said during the meetings, we wanted to make sure that we also acknowledged that in a way that was consistent with being a defendant in the case. And, and this is the way that we were able to brainstorm to come up with. So there's, there's two things that we're asking tonight, which one is, of course, the first and foremost is to approve the twenty million dollars in the insurance funds. But then the o- other one is the addition, which is, um, a resolution for the council to express its concerns. We heard what the council said last time and we enumerated those in the resolution that was sent out to the council. I'm requesting that that would be included.
So that leads me to my next question. I don't think it's interchangeable to worry settlement and insurance contribution. Because out in the community, there's a lot of confusion around when we saying settlement. You know, we voting on settlement opt-out and all this in the community, when really tonight, all we voting on is accepting of this insurance policy to safeguard the city and its residents. Can you put a little clarity on that and I'll be fine?
What it is doing is, is joining, it is joining into the litigation, but our portion, which we are able to join into the lawsuit is to add the twenty million. What went on between the state and the, and the plaintiffs, the citizen's attorneys for the six hundred million, it was not our part to add to. What we're adding into is joining into it by getting rid of our, uh, a majority of liability by adding to what was already there in existence. Just like McLaren did, they added in twenty million. Row added in one point two five. million, Row added in one point two five. We will be adding in insurance money, non-taxpayer dollars, and the amount of twenty million dollars through our success carrier.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler, so they're not interchangeable, because in the community is a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding on the, we're not here actually discussing settlement, settlement, because that's already done, that was done in December. Matter of fact, uh, in August twenty, and I see the, the state already didn't pass the bills, but if we delay tonight...
Yes, they passed it last night.
Yes, last night. But if we delay tonight, uh, uh, putting this contribution where it need to be voted up to safeguard the city, can we be putting ourselves in a bad way in this community?
Yes, it does. It really does compromise, um, the city's position, and like I said, we have an opportunity to get rid of a, a large liability, um, and also to be able to not have to pay the, the attorney fees to, to our own attorneys. So, that's another part that we're not going to have, like I said, there's a lot of things that could happen, um, catastrophically, and I think it was put best by the plaintiff's attorneys for the residents, Corey Stern and, uh, Ted Leopold, was that they, they looked at the previous, um, additions, um, that were proposed, and they said, you know, they, they were, you know, I think they had a lot of great respect for the council, but, that they would have to say no to those changes, and that they would just continue on without the city, and, uh, they would move forward without us. And I don't want us to be left behind. I want to make sure that we, um, are able to contribute the non-taxpayer insurance money, um, to, um, the existing settlement.
So, one more question, Madam Chair, and I'm out, and I thank you for indulging. Now, this here vote tonight, and I'm only, I'm only concerned, once again, with this insurance contribution. Are we, or are we not locked in with no options to negotiate once we, uh, approve the insurance contribution? Because in the community, we're voting to lock us in, that the residents, if they're not satisfied, they're locked in, and I'm seeing that not to be true. Any attorney can answer that question?
Thank you. Y'all have, um, Rick and, if I may, if I could have Rick and, uh, Bill and, um, and Sheldon to, um, to, um, chime in. Um, on, on the phone is, um, Assistant City Attorney Bill Kim, um, and the attorneys from Butler Long, Rick Berg, and Sheldon Klein.
Um, may I interrupt? Okay. I think we're getting far away from the discussion of the motion that's on the floor.
Point of order, point of order, point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Davis? What rule has been broken?
I want to be endorsed.
Mr. Davis, what rule has been broken? You called for a point of order, which means a rule has been broken.
You took the floor for me, I had the floor, Madam President, and this is Vice President, by the way, Davis. Thank you. You took the floor. May I continue?
Well, Mr. Davis, the Chair has the right to chair the meeting, and the discussion is going far afield from the motion that is on the floor.
This is imperative for this community, please endorse me.
Mr. Davis, you have jumped ahead to a discussion that there isn't even a motion on the floor for yet.
Madam President.
Okay?
I don't want to appeal your ruling, but please endorse me right now for this community, please. Thank you.
Do what you will, Mr. Davis.
Attorney Wheeler, proceed.
Thank you. Um, I have, um, um, Attorney Bill Kim, uh, Rick Berg, and Sheldon Klein on the phone, and, um, they, they, they can respond.
Yes, um, why don't I get started, Council, uh, Vice President? This is Assistant City Attorney Kim. Um, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're asking kind of what the relationship is between the, uh, twenty million dollars that the city is offering to the settlement?
Excuse me, Mr., Mr. Kim?
Yes.
I have thought about this, and this, this is out of order. This is out of order. This discussion is not germane.
I appeal the ruling, Madam Chair.
There's been an appeal to the ruling of the Chair, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? The appeal dies for lack of support. I would like to say, Mr. Davis, that you're jumping ahead into discussion that's pertinent when that resolution is on the floor, but it's not germane to the motion that's on the floor about getting our own attorney. That insurance discussion is not relevant to that motion. So, I, I would, uh, certainly be willing to hear all and anything you want to say and the attorneys want to say about the insurance, once we get to that point. It's just premature at this point in time. So, do you have any more discussion, Mr. Davis, regarding the motion that's on the floor about city coun, council obtaining its own independent attorney? Mr. Davis?
Yes, yes, Madam President.
Then proceed.
Uh, I yield the floor back, no further question, I'm done.
Madam Chair, if you'll hear.
Okay, is there any? Mr. Guerra?
Yes, um, I, from where we were last week, um, almost basically to the vote, we're to the point where I had made the motion to approve it, and I withdrew it out of respect for my colleagues to have more conversation, and now here we are several days later, on, uh, not enough time, in my opinion, meetings scheduled, uh, talking about multiple other motions, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed. Um, however, and, and the simple fact that with litigation coming in the future, I do, I do understand your point where you want to, where you want to get information from it, but, and, and this is my personal opinion, um, I think that we have city attorneys that are already paid for by city of plant tax residents, uh, and these city attorneys are available here for city council colleagues. I know I've never had a problem, uh, getting ahold of them, and especially when my residents have questions, I've always forwarded these questions over to the attorneys and gotten our responses back, and I think that this is, uh, could be, and this is my opinion again, a waste of more taxpayer dollars, and a, a situation that's already going to cost the city of plant residents a lot, and that they've been through a lot. Um, so, I, I won't be, uh, supporting this motion, and again, I, I really want to get to the main vote of tonight soon. I know, I don't know how everybody's schedule is looking, it's a special meeting again, and like I said, we've been, we've been waiting on the vote for quite some time now. So, that's just my opinion on this, um, and I think, uh, my colleagues can do however they please of. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Well, I, I would like to re... Okay, Ms. Worthing, and then I would like to say something. Ms. Worthing?
If you want to go first, I'm okay with that.
I would like to say that Ms. Wheeler referred to something she had sent counsel, and I have two emails from Ms. Wheeler, and, uh, one was, uh, uh, something about the concerns counsel expressed. I didn't even know I had that email, I got it two hours ago, and I certainly haven't had time to read that email. And then I got another email concerning some questions I had asked Ms. Wheeler, I had sent an email asking what documentation do we have that proves, you know, the insurance company will walk away? So, it, but it just illustrates my point that counsel is not being given information in a timely way by our own attorneys. And if we have our own attorney, certainly, not only do we need some response, in my opinion, to this current settlement and vote, but, and process, which we weren't given that opportunity. We were considered a non-client up until the point they needed us to vote on this, and all of a sudden we're the client, and we get information after they've already filed everything. So, we certainly weren't allowed input in the process, but they expect us to legally approve it in the end. But I also want to point out again to my colleagues, getting our own attorney now to deal with all wi, water litigation issues will mean that we're not going to be caught in this situation in the future on the EPA lawsuit, the land, the Biola, and the Val Washington lawsuits, that, you know, we're not going to be a, a, a day late and a dollar short, because we will have had time, okay, to get the information we need, and to express our concerns and be part of the process, to be the client that we're supposed to be, but have not given, been given the opportunity to be. So, and, and I don't know about the rest of the qua, the council, but I certainly have received no communication in any way about what's going on with the EPA litigation, the land, Biola, or the Val Washington litigation. So, if our attorneys are supposed to be represented in this, why haven't they come to us with any information about those lawsuits? So, I don't want to be in the same position that we keep getting put in, which is, oh, there's a time factor, you know, forget your rights, uh, just vote on this. So, I think it's vital that we receive, uh, that we have our own independent attorney. Ms. Worthing?
And then, Madam President.
And then, Mr. Mays?
And then, Councilman Griggs.
And then, Mr. Griggs.
Just to add to that, uh, I do not think it's a waste of taxpayer dollars. Um, you know, I have respect for Mr. Guerra, he has grown a lot, uh, since we began counsel. But, once you've lived a while, you can understand that sometimes things aren't always as they seem, and even if you have to pay some money to, you know, clarify that, uh, again, it's worth it, because this is important, this is even bigger probably than the GLEW vote. And I want to make sure, even if it's just double checking, um, that we've done it right, and that we are fully represented. Um, another thing is, it doesn't mean I'm going to vote no, or that I'm going to vote yes with conditions, since that's what the plaintiff, or, uh, yeah, the plaintiff's attorney said, they would not accept. It has, for me, it's a whole separate vote so that we can, um, bring forth our concerns that the judge can hear, uh, we really, I mean, there's no other choice, we, we've had to vote for this, it's pretty much like GLEW, in which the judge said, "Hey, you have to vote for this." Um, and, and, and I do want our voices to be heard this time, and, and so, having our own attorney, uh, will at least give us some power, uh, even if it's just hopeful power. It feels like, um, counsel and the residents are, are never heard, or that we never really get that chance. Um, and, and I'd like at this time at least to, to have myself and my constituents be heard, even if it doesn't change anything. It's just one of those things that you have to do, because it's what's right. So, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Mr. Mays, go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, because I know, um, we're ready to vote, I think, but, you know, every counsel person deserves to be heard, and they deserve to try to get an understanding. I would say through you, Madam President, to Mr. Guerra, I would ask him the question, "Have you seen this companion resolution yet?" I have not.
I'm just ready to vote, guys, I'm not going to be here all night for this.
So, you haven't seen it? Now, once we get a document and we look at it as a companion resolution, as it was just described by an attorney, there's nothing wrong with having an attorney look at these documents, because the way this thing work, if we say we don't want Mr. Edwards' signature, but we want Mr. Neely's signature, we can put a line there for it, and we can vote, and people have to veto and override. You don't see the United States, nor the state of Michigan, Gretchen Whitmer and the President them have to sign this stuff. And so, Mr. Guerra, do you think it's legal for Michigan State and the mayor decided, people running finance? This is legal. And then I would say this, Mr. Davis, when we get to this companion resolution, then I'll help answer the question as to whether or not you even need lawyers to look over stuff, because you got lawyers in this litigation, filing motions with this, you got Mark Koker, and I want to get you out of this document. So, it's just common sense, Mr. Guerra, in, in America, we can have a lawyer. It might not cost the taxpayers money, it might help the taxpayers, because you don't know all the legal answers, and sometime we need help. Thank you, I'm ready to vote, but I'm courteous.
Well, let's hear from Mr. Griggs, it's his turn.
Okay, uh...
Mr. Griggs?
Yes, this is for my colleagues. I believe about three times, we have voted not to go into executive session on this matter. I voted yes to go into executive session all two or three times, but we've never could go into executive session. Now, all of a sudden, it's, we're, it's like we're saying, we don't want a lawyer, and now we're going to executive session. So, I just, you know, why didn't, why did everybody choose to keep their head in the sand, and all of a sudden they put their head out of the sand and want to hear about this? We've had opportunities to go into executive session before, but we couldn't get six votes to do it. Y'all think about that, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. If there's no further discussion, I'm ready for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Davis?
On the motion, just a moment, I'd like to restate the motion. The motion is the city council gets their own independent attorney to help them deal with all water litigation, and the city of plant attorney to expedite hiring once identified, once that firm is identified. You got that, Janelle?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, okay, now, roll call.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Guerra?
No.
Ms. Field?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, three no.
Six yes, three no, the motion carries. Okay, now, let's go back to, just, just a moment, I'm going to go back to, uh, general discussion. Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, now, I would like to see if we can discuss this companion resolution that I'm just hearing about, and I know my phone rang. Any, uh, city attorney, anybody call my cell phone, I know them seven six six numbers, if I miss them, I call them back. Um, through you to Ms. Wheeler, when did the attorney's office draw up this, what you called the companion resolution?
Uh, we drew it up and sent it today.
Beg your pardon?
We drew it up, and we sent it today.
And so, that mean it would be discussed today. Um, Mr. Davis was asking a question that can be, I guess, addressed, and it ain't a long answer from a many attorneys, it's that one attorney or somebody should just be able to answer it. We're trying to do something here with the council, because y'all already know way more than we do. A lot of this stuff couldn't be discussed in detail until it was filed with the court. The rules is that not only can we lodge objections, but residents, individuals can, and some of them might need lawyers unless Judge Levy make the objection period, um, so basic and elementary, but this is a federal court. I would like for people to refer to this, not as the settlement, I would like for us to refer to it all around the city, attorneys and everybody... Attorneys and everybody talk about it as the proposed settlement. Don't nobody know if Judge Levy is gonna accept it. Don't be mad at the council, residents, or nobody, or even lawyers, who say, "Hey, this need to be looked at. There's only three bone marrow tests, and one law firm got that. It's handicapping us." These are legitimate objections that the judge should hear, as many of them as her and her staff and people can, before she make a decision whether or not she'll accept this proposed settlement. So, I don't like people referring to it as the settlement. The settlement don't happen whether we in it or not. It's a proposed settlement. All of this stuff is proposed. So, keep that in mind as we talk about this tonight. All of it is proposed. Even insurance money is proposed. And so, before I get into that, I'm, 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 I'm understanding a lot. And I ain't no lawyer, but lawyers can help you even form companion resolutions. Now, here we done got a companion resolution, ain't been discussed, and Mr. Um, Mr. Guerra, Mr. Davis is thinking, "Oh, we ready to vote." No, you ain't, 'cause you ain't even discussed a companion resolution that came from the attorneys you like. I ain't seen it. Through you, Madam President, to Mr. Davis, have you seen this companion resolution?
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, you may respond, Mr. Mays.
No, I haven't seen the companion, uh, resolution.
But now, I would say that's probably an honest answer, because you're hearing in this public record that we're just getting it. And when you vote on one, you vote on this companion. That's why Ms. Fields brought the, um, wanted to entertain a motion, and we just went attorney first. Because now, the companion resolution probably is gonna be similar to what she's talking about. Um, through you, Madam Chair, and then I'll yield the floor. Ms. Willough, you say you made the companion resolution based upon what you heard us talking about in council meeting, or you met and talked with specific council people?
May I respond? Yes. So, Monday, when we had the meeting, Councilman Fields had brought in a resolution tonight. We heard and we listened to what was said by the council, and began to drum something that would be consistent with the request to approve, um, the original resolution, but not be, um, and also, that would also be consistent and companion to that. Um, so, we put together a resolution, um, that was prepared, and we submitted two days this afternoon to all the council members, um, to consider, uh, for this evening. And so, that goes through. And, and I have students on the phone who-
Well, that's okay. I'm, I'm, I'm finna yield the floor. I just want you to give good legal advice to Mr. Guerra and Mr. Davis, that they should slow down pushing the vote when the attorney is gonna introduce a companion resolution that they worked on. But let me say this, Ms., 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 Ms. Willough. If we got phone numbers, and y'all work for us, I'm eager to see it. Maybe you hit my issues dead on the head. But my position is this, I bet you that companion resolution, do it have the mayor's signature spot?
No, it doesn't require the mayor's signature on the resolution yet.
Well, I'm just saying, we'll, we'll keep talking about that, whose signature is required. But now, also, my other question would be, um, do, do this companion resolution, 'cause if it's a companion, what do we vote on first? And how do they cook together? I don't want to discuss it right now. I might have to talk to- I ju- I'm just saying, Ms. Willough, I'm up for the discussion. Even if this companion resolution causes us to meet again tomorrow, I'm not like some of my colleagues. When it's this type of business on the table, these many nuances, I'm not gonna rush. That's gonna be the record I make, and it's gonna be a logical, rational record. Mr. Davis, we getting close to that answer that you asked. I just want to go slow. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, Mr. Mays. Um, Mr. Guerra, I want to actually read this resolution. So, because we only got this two hours ago, and what's in this resolution is absolutely pertinent to this kind of general discussion. So, would you like the floor first, or would you like me to read this resolution first? This companion resolution?
We're on the companion resolution, correct?
No, we're, we're just in a general discussion right now. And I'd like to read what this says, because I don't even think-
I would like to make a motion, while I have the floor. Since we can do that now. Make a motion to approve two zero zero four eight eight.
Mo- Motion's been made to approve two zero zero four eight eight. Is there, um, a second?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Uh, what's your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
Point of order, Madam Chair, is that the resolution that follows after this discussion?
Yes.
And so, therefore, it's a violation of the change and/or addition to the agenda. He doesn't just get to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Point of information.
What's your point of information?
Is Ms. Galloway aware that we were on that motion next, last, previous council meeting, and we've done three additional-
Point of order, point of order. Ms. Fields, can you rule, can you rule on her point of order?
Mr. Mays, he called a point of information in the middle of a point of order, so no, I didn't, but I would like him to finish what he wanted to say, and then I would like to respond to the point of order. So, without another point of order confusing the issue.
Can I respond to his point of information?
Sure, Ms. Galloway.
Councilman Guerra, you are very wrong. If you go back to the record, we were in a discussion that Councilman Mays asked for during a agenda change. He asked to go into a dialogue in which we voted on before that resolution came up. Why our clerk did not have that, and so, you're very much wrong. We were never on that resolution, and so, therefore, you are in violation, because you did not ask for that to be changed during agenda change, 'cause we are in a, um, in a meeting that is from a reset. So, your, uh, your motion is out of order.
So, the motion for the attorney was in the changes to agenda too, because I don't remember that being there either, so-
But you voted on it, and you voted no, Mr. Guerra.
All right, all right. Just a moment, let the chair speak. Mr. Guerra, we hadn't finished discussion, okay? And we, when we ended the last meeting, there, the, this motion for the resolution was not on the floor, okay? Because we never got a second, other business intervened, so the motion wasn't completed. So, we were still in discussion, even though it isn't on the agenda. But this council voted to suspend the rules to allow discussion prior to a motion being put on the floor. And we really have not finished that discussion. And I think it's really pertinent, since they keep referencing this companion resolution. And I don't know if you've had a chance to read it. I just now read it, because it had been referenced. I had not seen my email. I had not seen the companion resolution. And I, I would like to read this, um, prior to you making that motion. So, before I, Ms. Galloway, I, I think you were correct. Ruling of the chair is, we were still in discussion, shouldn't have moved forward with that motion. Would anyone care to appeal the ruling of the chair? Hearing none. Mr. Guerra? Mr. Davis? We're not seconding that we're on a point of order. Okay, Mr. Guerra, having heard that and said all that, are you still making your motion at this point in time?
Yeah, I am.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
What's your point of order?
You just ruled, he can't make that motion. He's overriding the council. On a six to three vote, we made a motion.
You're right. You're right, Ms. Galloway. So, now is not the appropriate time for that motion. We can't hear that motion yet.
All right, fair enough. I won't appeal, but I have the floor still. I won't, I won't appeal your dissent. But, I mean, clearly, I, I think my point was made. And to the point where you're right, a ten minute discussion was allowed before this, and it's been multiple days, and it's been way longer than ten minutes. So, I get that this council, we're gonna continue doing this back and forth thing with this vote, but I, I really ask my colleagues, I think a lot of us have decided how we're gonna vote, and I think the residents want to know too, today, hopefully soon, either vote it up or vote it down. But I don't want to see another postponement. And with this council, the way it goes is constantly postpone, postpone, postpone. Either, we, we need to make a decision. And I think that what I did was right, but I'm not gonna appeal it, because we constantly end up in appeals in these meetings, and it waits hours and hours and hours. So, there's no point with this body, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Now, I want to read this resolution, because since it's been presented as a companion resolution, we can't even get to Resolution two zero zero four eight eight until this is looked at and discussed. Okay, and I'm gonna read it, and it's not terribly long, but bear with me. The resolution that the city attorney brought before us is, "Whereas numerous Flint water litigation cases, lawsuits arising out of the city's use of the Flint River from 2014 to 2015, have been filed in state and federal court, in which the City of Flint, former city officials and/or city employees are among those named as defendants. And whereas, the city council has approved settlement of those claims to the maximum attend, extent possible, using twenty million in funds to be provided by the city's excess liability insurance carrier, at no additional expense to the city's taxpayers. And whereas, the city council, on behalf of their constituents, the residents of the City of Flint, expresses the following concerns regarding the settlement agreement. One, that the state of Michigan is contributing insufficient funds to the settlement agreement. Two, that the proof of injury requirements in the settlement agreement may be unduly burdensome on some residents of the City of Flint. Three, that the settlement agreement should more explicitly cover payment of water bills by the residents of the City of Flint. Four, that the settlement agreement should allocate settlement funds to cover claims for payment of water bills in an amount not less than two percent. Five, that the city council would prefer an additional two months to consider and deliberate regarding the settlement agreement and conduct additional consultations. Therefore, be it resolved that these are the concerns of the Flint City Council regarding the settlement agreement resolving the Flint water litigation, and that the members of city council may, at their discretion, submit to the applica, applicable court or courts these concerns, along with any other concerns that individual city council members may have." Now, that last paragraph is really important. So, the various issues that council raised are in that one through five. Uh, I, I think that covers most of them, maybe not all of them. So, that's to be considered. But also, key in this, that, that's why I have asked to entertain the motion, okay? That our attorneys file a response to the settlement emo, uh, motion, and/or objections, that gets to that part, regarding these objections or concerns of council. So, if they're telling us in this resolution that we may, at our discretion, submit, well, first, we had to have an attorney to submit it. So, that, I think, was done in the correct sequence. And I believe there are council members that do want to submit responses and objections. So, at this point in time, I would again ask, I'll entertain a motion to have our attorney file a response to the settlement motion regarding any objections.
Uh, Madam Chair?
What's the will of the body?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Worthing?
Uh, so move. Point of order.
What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
Madam Chair, what makes this different from the motion that Mr. Guerra entertained?
Point of information.
Could you hold a moment, Mr. Mays?
Point of information.
Before I hear your point of information, I, I need, I couldn't hear, Ms. Galloway. Could you repeat that? What's your point of order?
We're doing the same thing that Councilman Guerra did. We're trying to move an, a, a, agenda item onto the council floor while we have already voted on other things. We're moving ahead. If that is a, um, a companion to the resolution that we haven't gone into yet, we are changing the agenda again.
Okay, I'm gonna respond to your point of order. We are not changing the agenda. I have just read what the, uh, because we're not moving into approving the res, the water litigation resolution with the companion resolution. We're just voting that our attorneys can file a response. It's, they're different things, Ms. Galloway. And Mr. Mays, uh, what is your point of information?
No, I don't need it. I'll wait till you guys finish, and then I'll just ask for the floor. But it's in response to what Ms. Galloway was talking about, if you want me to continue.
Yes, well, I've, I've had the ruling that, I, I don't believe Ms. Galloway is correct. So, what, you may have the floor, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, Ms. Galloway, Mr. Guerra's specific motion was going against when we would vote on the resolution. This new resolution, um, is not being moved. We just read it. The motion was that we might look, if we get an attorney, to have him look at maybe filing what some of our objections might be similar to this. The objection period in a proposed settlement is a legal proceeding. You keep listening, and you'll shortly hear Judge Levy them lay out for people who want to file claims and participate, and people who want to file objections. This is shaping up where lawyers have issues with it. Residents have issues with it. Some council people have issues with it. And nobody have to feel one way or another about a proposed settlement where the details and nuances is just being revealed. This is the process. It's like the vote of the people, the vote of the council. Do you dump twenty million into something that you don't agree with? Really, if you listen to some of us, we've said for the last two, three years, our legal counsel and others should have filed a counterclaim or a third party claim, or something against the state. The state should be giving us twenty million to go with the twenty million that we got to clear up loose lawsuits, 'cause it was their emergency managers and folks who took control. Now, we dumping twenty million into a big pool for them. And really, if we did certain things legally, people say, "You can't sue." You can sue, you can settle lawsuits. They might be settling, saying, "We'll put the six hundred million, and because we were wrong, give y'all twenty million." So, I'm gonna be eager to get to that. But it's reasons- But, it's reasons that you use the term objections. It's the legal process, it's the process where the judge is saying, I'm all ears from everybody who want to talk to me, this is your time, the details has been released. Scrutinize it, see what you think. Lawyers might have day cut and be ready to settle. Residents and people who represent residents might not. So, you know, I don't care about voting on a motion for objections. We not voting on the resolution, we ain't to it yet. And, you know, I'm gonna just keep listening. But, it's a good thing that we talking in public, Mr. Griggs, where the residents can hear versus in closed session. I vow that this whole process will be open and transparent. Thank you.
Mr. Mays, thank you, but you know what? I think I made a parliamentary mistake by giving you the floor. There was a motion on the floor, and before I could ask for a second, Ms. Galloway called a point of order, so I had to deal with that. And the correct thing to have done is, is there a second to the motion that Ms. Worthing has put on the floor? Is there a second to that motion? The motion is to file, for our attorney to file a response to the settlement motion with any objections or concern. Is there a second to that motion?
Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, now is their discussion. Mr. Mays, you kinda had your own first round, Ms. Galloway?
Um, Madam President, so when can we have to, um, the attor- who is the attorney that's gonna file this for us? Is it gonna be the one that we speak out, which might very well cause us to miss the deadline? Or, are we saying that we're directing this, um, to Attorney Wheeler and those that are working on the case before I move any further with my, um, comments?
Well, that's a good question, Ms. Galloway. Maybe you should ask Attorney Wheeler?
Uh, Mr. Kim? Mr. Kim, if I could speak briefly?
Um, Ms. Galloway?
Ms. Wheeler, are you on the chair as well?
Ms. Galloway, would you like to hear from Attorney Kim? Alright?
Please.
I, I think Ms. Wheeler is available, so I will, of course, defer to her if she would like to answer that.
No, I just wanna defer back to Attorney Kim, Rick Berg, and Sheldon Klein, to make an answer or so. If Attorney Kim can go ahead, please.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify one thing for Councilmember Galloway, and that's, uh, and also for Councilmember Mays, is that the objection process to which you refer, um, does, is, is, is currently pending, that hasn't even opened yet. Um, that will be something that will happen, uh-
Point of information? Point of information, Mr. Kim? Are you aware, the motion says to file a response to the water settlement motion? And/or any objections?
Uh, I, I am aware of that, and I'm trying to explain the process for the council here. Um-
Point of information, point of, point of information, Madam President.
Just a moment, the response is different than the objections. What is your point of information, Mr. Mays?
Yeah. Is Mr. Kim aware, Attorney Kim aware, that I'm very much aware that the objection process haven't been opened up by the court yet? And if you listen close, you haven't heard me allude to that. It will open up, the claim period haven't opened up. So, I don't want you to put out there in the public that I'm not aware. Are you aware that I am aware?
Uh, my apologies, Councilmember Mays, uh, you are correct there, that you've been, you've been careful to make that distinction. Um, but to answer Councilwoman Galloway's question, uh, there will be sufficient time, because the period to, in which to submit, uh, those types of concerns and objections, uh, will come only after, if and when, uh, Judge Levy grants preliminary approval, which is, would be her finding that it is sufficiently, uh, fair to move forward with the process. That doesn't say that the settlement has been completely approved, but it says that it's basically fair enough for it to move forward. And at that point, uh, that would be the, the opportunity for the council, city council members, uh, to make their opinions known bec- uh, uh, to the courts.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Galloway?
So, through you to Attorney Kim, so, um, the response from council will not take place before the judge makes the decision. It will take place or be submitted to the judge during the same process that all of the residents in the city of Flint get to voice any objections they have?
That is correct, Councilmember, that is, that is the way that the process works.
So, so, through you to the draft-
Point, point of information, Ms. Galloway?
Please, sorry.
Okay. Are you aware that if council actually votes, potentially, to postpone this decision on the settlement, that our attorney might have the time and opportunity to file not only an objection, once the judge has heard the preliminary and decided on it, but prior to that, a response to the settlement motion itself? You don't know what's going to happen.
Right, I get, and I appreciate that.
I'm not a mind reader. Thank you.
And I, and I appreciate that, Madam President. Um, I'm just wondering why a, um, what do we call this? Again, the, um, not a sister, what is this considered that we're voting on right now? A companion? I'm just wondering how this companion-
No, no, Ms. Galloway? Ms. Galloway, we're not voting on the companion resolution. The motion is-
No, but I'll just-
The motion is-
Go ahead.
That, that council's attorney files a response to the motion and/or later objections regarding the water settlement. That's what the motion is.
Right, and, and Madam President, the reason why I'm trying to ask for clarification is because what is this, what is the difference with this? When in fact, we as individual council people, as well as all of the constituents that live in the city of Flint, have the same right to do this? What are we actually doing now? Just having, we're having them compile what we want?
Point of information.
Mr. Mays, what is your point of information?
Through you to the speaker, Ms. Galloway, do you know that judges and people look at things closer? They look at them when a body do it, and they look at it when a lot of individuals do it. So, this is just a time, it's just a procedure, that's why I'm urging them to keep saying proposed settlement. Preliminary approvals are normally granted. But, you got opportunity now and before and after. And it, it can be anybody. A council person, a resident, a lot of residents, a couple council persons. The judge is saying, now reveal it to the people, and you decide, and I'm gonna be looking at what the people say. This is that time.
Uh, and, Mr. Mays, you're going far beyond the point of information.
So, Madam Chair, the, my ultimate question is, when are, when do we need to have, this motion is being made, I'll support it, when do we need to have what we would like added so that it can be filed on behalf of what we're requesting today?
Ms. Galloway, all I can say to you is, we don't know the answer to that yet, okay?
Okay.
Because-
Thank you.
If we later vote to postpone this, we might be able to have our attorney file something, a response to the proposed motion, okay, on the water settlement, prior to the judge deciding in her preliminary hearing to accept the, the settlement as it is. And then later, we also have an opportunity to file objections to the judge's decision. So, the word objections is used in a very specific manner for a very specific point in time.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Fields?
Ms. Wheeler?
Uh, may I have Attorney Klein explain a couple of things about that, to help add some light to it?
Sure.
Or Attorney Berg, you, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fields. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, the, any resident of the city of Flint will have an opportunity to object, and as I think we now all understand, those dates will be set in the future, if and when the court decides to grant preliminary, not final approval of the settlement. A hearing on the preliminary approval motion is this coming Monday, the twenty first, I believe, is, is the date. At the, at that time, the council as a body, as opposed to the council as individual members, do not have a legal right, and I, you know, I, last time I spoke, I said, sometimes clients don't like hearing legal, legal advice, this might be one of those times. There is a doctrine called standing. And, the city does not, it's just a fancy way of saying you don't have a legal right, uh, to speak as quite particular issue, and that would be true for the city, whether it's the city council, or the mayor, or whatever the case might be. Um, you know, it, it can win an opportunity, or, uh, and I say if, only because the court might fail to grant preliminary approval. No one knows, she's taking this tremendously seriously. Uh-
Mr. Klein, may I ask you a question before you move on?
Certainly.
Are you saying there's a question whether city council has standing in the court over this issue that they require city council to approve? Are you suggesting we don't have standing?
Y- yes. Um, if, if, if I can, you, you don't have standing to object to the settlement, because you aren't a plaintiff. You being the city. The, the residents of the city are plaintiffs, the city isn't a plaintiff, is a plaintiff, they are a defendant, they are being sued. And, and, you know, I, I don't know that it's a good use of anyone's time to go through all of the case law, etc., I'm glad to, if this, if someone thinks it's the best use of the city's time and money to put together a legal memorandum on this point, I would be glad to. Um, but, the answer to your question is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Well, I, I would like to, I would like to add something to this. Basically, I see this motion as simply giving our attorney, that we've already voted on, we are going to obtain an attorney, permission to file these things on our behalf. That's all this motion is about. That's one of the reasons why- Who is this, Ms. Klein, again?
I, I apologize. It, it wasn't, I did not, I forgive, I forgive me.
Okay.
May, may I add a couple of more points?
Sure.
Did you say no? Oh, okay, I thought someone said no. Um, the, the, the question was asked some time ago, how long will it take another attorney to get up to speed? I just want to give a few data points on that. In this case, there are seven hundred thousand documents that have been produced and discovered. That's documents, not pages. It, it's millions of pages. In this case, there have been two hundred plus depositions, days of deposition taken. Each day is, is a rule of, um, three hundred pages of transcript. Um, so, I, I would just ask, in, in, when you make your own estimates as to what would be required to get up to speed, to adequately advise you on this situation, uh, the, those simple data points, thank you.
Madam President?
Uh, just a moment, Mr. Mays. I would just like to respond to Mr. Klein, you know, be that as it may- Just a moment, Mr. Mays. Be that as it may, if somehow the timing is such that our attorney is not allowed to, um, file something, a response to the proposed water settlement motion, okay? Then, they would have already our permission to file our objections. That's all this motion is for. Now, Mr. Mays, you may have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Through you to Mr., who is it, Klein? Attorney Klein?
That's correct.
Attorney Klein. And the state settlement, name who has standing? Just a brief example of who have standing. The state of Michigan has standing, correct?
No, the state of Michigan does not have standing to object to the settlement. The residents-
I didn't say to object to the settlement, they have standing to file pleadings. See, standing, standing don't go to just objections. I'm asking you, does the state of Michigan have standing in this cause of action to file pleadings? I think the answer is yes, what you said.
The answer is, it depends on what the pleadings say.
Okay. Now, the plaintiff's attorneys have standings, correct?
Absolutely.
And the plaintiff's attorney is saying, even though you got millions of documents, or hundreds of thousands of documents, as you described, if you're not satisfied with this, we're dropping you like a hot potato, and you gotta get another attorney, correct?
Uh, I, I-
That's part of the settlement, correct? If sixty percent of the people take it, and forty percent of them opt out, 'cause they got that right, the attorneys in these causes of action who have had standing is saying, when it comes to the state, even though we know about all them documents, and we've been kicking they butt, and they ready to settle, they ain't selling out the goodness of their heart, them attorneys is saying, go get some new attorneys, correct?
Councilmember Mays, if I could say something here? I think you're starting to really get into, uh, questions that really speak to the relationship between the plaintiff's counsel and their client.
No, 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 he opened that door for standing attorney, Kim. And I know what standing is. And I know if people represent, let me, let me finish, I got the floor, y'all done had meetings for months. Meetings for months. And don't think we got sense enough to chime in. So, I'm saying to you guys, you can't portray me as somebody who don't understand. Because I'm asking specifically, you know somebody got standing. And I know somebody got standing. Now, when we join in a claim, you telling me that if, if we joined in, we wouldn't have standing?
Councilmember Mays, the question that you asked- Councilmember Mays, the question that you asked was to, was asking us to essentially comment on the relationship between, uh, the residents of the city of Flint as plaintiffs and their council as plaintiffs. Uh, it would be improper for us to do that, because our, our job is to represent the city of Flint. Um, and our recommendation, and the reason why we brought these resolutions, um, is so that we can do that, because we believe that it is in the best interest of the city of Flint to resolve the lawsuit against the city, and against the city's former officials and employees, by using the twenty million that the, uh, that our, that our excess liability insurers have made available solely for this purpose, to, for the city to join in this settlement.
Attorney Kim, Attorney Kim, you sang into the choir, I'm gonna tell you why, and then I'm gonna give the floor back up to some of my colleagues who might really want to know, I already think I know. They not giving us nothing. We paid a three hundred and something thousand dollar premium every year in case something happened. Now, y'all done say it here on the record, if they don't want to pay the premium, we can fight them in court. That's okay, here, we've been fighting in court since the civil rights movement. My provision is that, where is the, um, agents or attorneys for the insurance company? I've asked for two, three meetings, are they here?
They are not, Councilmember.
Okay, so my provision is this, we'll get into that later.
Excuse, excuse me, we're talking over each other, Mr. Mays has the floor.
So, all I'm saying is, that lawyer opened the door about standing. And I'm telling you, the attorneys who represent us got standing. The state of Michigan who being sued. Um, whoever got standing, I'm telling you, we represent some of the same people. And I'm telling you, ain't no way that you want me to be a joint party, a joint defendant, selling something. And, you can't tell me who got standing- selling something, and you can't tell me who got standing and who don't, but you throw that word out there. We don't have to have standing for objections, and we don't have to have standing, I can write a letter on my letter here to the judge across the street. He can throw it away, he can read it, he can penalize me. You don't have to have, um, legal standing to communicate, but you tell me, what do we have to do? Draw up companion resolutions? You don't have to have standing to do a companion resolution, to send it up there to make your point. So don't play me for one, as somebody who's gonna just sit and listen to every excuse not to advocate, communicate. If y'all been doing it for months, don't ask me to vote on it in two, three weeks. And don't ask me to go and close door sessions, I want a hu- ninety thousand heads is better than nine or ten. I want them to hear every detail, so they'll be ahead of the game. Y'all didn't even know the details and nuances of this, some of you, until it was filed with the court. Now it's time to examine it. Some people have just jumped on blindly, and we wanna explore it publicly, and so the public will know how much we know, and how much cooperation we got before we made a decision. That's why we governed by the Open Meetings Act. So, unless nobody get frustrated, the attorneys been doing a good job, they been winning, defendants now wanna settle. Attorneys don't wanna keep working, because if we went to trial, you might get a billion and a half, two billion. This is a settlement, it's a proposed settlement, and it's proposed to try to get a whole lot of people to jump on, without knowing what their checks amount's gonna be. We wanna get them the details, so they can make an intelligent decision to jump on. We want the details, and I'm gonna tell you, and then I'm gonna yield the floor. I'm gonna tell you, in all reality, if we had good lawyers filing lawsuits that don't go to court through trial, we would have one against the state where we would be settling, they might be putting twenty million with our twenty million dollar insurance policy, 'cause they were at fault. They might be putting another five million for the emergency managers we've been defending and representing, because they was at fault. But look at this, we taking our little crumbs, and, uh, being told by competent attorneys to throw it in, and that ain't my style, without question. So this is question day. Thank you, Madam President. Oh, one last thing, Madam President. Tell me, Attorney Kim, Attorney Klein, what is our deadline? Tonight? Could we, can we convene in a day or two or three? I already know the answer, but I want you to say for the record, is this deadline night for y'all, uh, attorneys? Say publicly, is this deadline night, or what's the drop dead deadline? Six days, ten days? Do you know? I think I know.
I, I, I believe that virtually every meeting, we've explained that the deadline is December thirty one.
That's correct.
I'm glad I passed.
Yeah, well, I mean, don't, 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 don't act like we ain't got time to get some stuff straight, and I want my colleagues to hear it more than you.
I am so sorry, I was muted. I said, thank you, Mr. Mays, I also wanted to point out that not only do we have a regular council meeting on the twenty first, there is basically ten days between the twenty first and the thirty first. Okay, so, I'm back to...
Madam President?
Ms. Worthing?
I just wanted to speak in discussion.
I'm sorry?
I, I just wanted to speak in discussion if, if, um...
On the motion that's on the floor.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, so I understand clear now, all of this can be so confusing. Um, even just this resolution, um, it's not the companion resolution, it is a, a motion with our objection, I think, right?
Point of information.
May, may I have Attorney Berg, uh, respond?
Just a moment, I have a point of information. Would Ms. Worthing like me to repeat what the motion is?
Yeah.
The motion is that city council will have their attorney file a response to the proposed water settlement lawsuit and/or any objections later.
Okay.
That's all the motion is, we're giving our attorneys permission to file something on behalf if needed.
Yeah, um, I'm in favor of that, of course, um, but I think we're all confusing, like what's what. Uh, it just occurred to me, when listening to our attorney, no, we're not the plaintiff, that's why we weren't consulted about this six hundred million, because we're not the ones suing, we're the defendants. We're the, we're representing, in this case only, the city, uh, and, and, and we're taking that twenty million dollar insurance money, and using it for the plaintiffs who are suing us. So I feel like we're acting like we're a part of this settlement, that we're suing ourselves or something. I think it's just that way out of hand, and I'm kind of a fanfino on this. I really would just like to vote for it, um, I'd like to vote for this, I'd like to vote for the original resolution, and then I would like to vote for the, whatever else we wanna vote for, but I just kinda wanna get it over with, 'cause I understand it clearly, and a lot of this is just the same stuff over and over again. Um, so I'm ready to vote, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the motion to allow our attorney to file responses? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Garrett?
Yeah.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Vote is eight yes, one no.
Eight yes, one no, the motion passes. Okay, now, I know council, I know council has fatigue here, okay, but I wanna state that now we're at the point, and now this provision of a companion resolution, and what it says, may change things on the motion I asked for, but where would the council like to go from here? Mr. Mays?
Madam Pres- Madam President.
Yep.
Yeah, Madam President, you recognize me?
Yes.
Okay, Madam President, and to the council, all council members, I can clearly hear at least three or four council members who is saying, let's vote, let's vote, let's vote, we should've voted last week, why drag it on? Let's vote, let's vote, let's vote. It ain't dragging it on. If you got an insurance policy, and I've asked for three meetings to talk to somebody from the insurance carrier, the insurance company, who we're hearing that, we've, we've been told that if we don't accept this, we might get nothing, but then we've told, if we don't accept it, we might have to sue the insurance company. Now, I'm just totally surprised. If you ain't got a deadline, and you ain't really, um, found out all the nuances and details, 'cause it just come out, and you don't even know stuff like, if they say you ain't got standing, have they got a clause specific to the city that says, when these city residents who had lawsuits, if they sign claims, whether it's thirty thousand that sign claims, and thirty thousand file objections, the judge will decide which way she wanna go at that proper time. But Angela, Mr. Stern, Mr. Kim, where is the paperwork that puts us in this, and shows us that these people can come back on other lawsuits? Have that paperwork been drawn up yet?
If I may have Attorney Berg go explain that.
Yeah, Mr. Mays, this is Rick Berg, um, thank you for, uh, the opportunity to respond. Um, in short, the right of individuals to opt out or pursue their own claims, uh, separate and apart from the settlement agreement, is already in the settlement agreement. It's in the settlement agreement that's been filed.
No, you missing my point, I'm talking about the city, I'm not talking about individuals. Where is the language that accompanies the city joining in?
The city joining the, the settlement that's on file?
Yeah, it should be some language, some paperwork that I can see.
The, the city, the city's already, the, the city is a party to, the, 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 the language is already, what you were provided was the settlement agreement that was filed with the court, as I understand it, I, I didn't say that.
The settlement agreement that was filed with the court included the city before the city voted, that's what you're saying?
Oh, that's exactly right.
Y'all just assumed that the vote would be yes, and so you submitted like...
No, 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 that's not right, the, the lang- the, the settlement agreement is very, very clear, that it is subject to the city council's vote, and if the city council does not vote in favor by December thirty first, we are not in the settlement agreement.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, now we on the same page.
Yeah, it's not effective at all, until, uh, until the city, uh, council votes for it, that's...
No, but it ain't just the city council, the city is a two-part system. The city is a sign-off for the council, which votes as a body, and then the city is a sign-off by the mayor. Now, I'm telling you, that's how I know city documents to work, and particularly some of this nature, and I can't understand, but, so, through you to Ms. Wheeler and Mr. Stern, are y'all objecting to the mayor's signature being on this?
Um, let me just correct, that's Attorney Berg, I think you keep saying Stern, that's, that's Attorney Berg.
Oh, I said, well, excuse me, Berg, it's the city attorney, and Stern is still on the line, is well or not?
Well, I don't, I don't think Stern was ever on the line tonight.
Okay, so, Berg, I'm, I'm sorry, my apologies.
No problem, um, but the, but the, the charter says, it says, no, no civil litigation of the city, including those for which there is insurance, may be settled without the approval and consent of the city council.
Let me ask you this question, let me ask you this question. If the city council votes on the resolution, the charter also say that the mayor can veto it, don't, don't, can't, don't?
It's a different section, that's a different section of the charter.
I know it's a different section, all I'm saying, Angela, I'm not new at this, I know what's going on, I'm just trying to get everybody on the page of understanding. The mayor done made up his mind to agree. Clyde Edwards can't veto us? I'm saying ain't no way y'all gonna convince me that business is done a certain way. I understand...
That's what I'm saying, you have it in reverse. You have it in reverse.
Whatever I got in reverse.
The order, the order is, would be...
Point of order.
Oh, point of order.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I was muted. What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
Madam Chair, um, you said that people would respect each other and not interrupt, and there consistently is interruption here.
This is true, I would like people to try to please stay calm, keep the voices at kind of a, you know, civil level, and not interrupt each other, allow each other to finish their sentences, okay?
So, Ms...
Uh, Mr. Mays, you have the floor.
Ms. Wheeler, so I want you to start by telling me what do I don't understand that's in reverse, let's hear it.
Um, excuse me to say, I, I don't mean that in a disrespectful manner, I just wanna...
No, I, I don't think you do, I just wanna hear it.
What I, what you mean is that, when you talk about the, the mayor, the mayor having the power to bind the city, that's a different section, and that would be more so if, like, for example, you approve a settlement, um, and the settlement documents, after, after you've approved them, the resolution, then there may be a document that the mayor may have to sign, so that's a different, that's a different level, which would mean that the settlement, um, would be signed off, you know, by, by the administration, through the mayor, but, um, as far as the resolution, it doesn't require that the mayor sign that, um, the, the administrator, who's second in command to the mayor, is also empowered to sign the resolution. So, I'm just saying, there's just a couple of things about the order, and then, then of course, obviously, the council signs the...
Let me, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, 'cause...
No, I was, I was...
Okay, let me say this, Ms. Wheeler, 'cause we could save a lot of time, if we just do the quick answer, the attorneys don't have to think, let us, if we have more information, you know, but if that's how y'all answer, that's how y'all answer, so, you know, y'all take up just as much time as we do. My position is this, Clyde Edwards wasn't on TV and on the radio talking about take this settlement, it's the floor, not the ceiling. I wanna know the avenues to the ceiling. Ain't no attorney can tell me there's an agreement that say the EPA money can go into this six hundred million, and show it to me, can anybody show me that? Mr. Berg?
I think Attorney Stern, he explained that the other night, it was, I think back in December third.
Oh, he already explained, right. What did he say? He said that that's a different court.
My memory is that he did talk about the EPA and some other, other things, maybe Attorney Berg can expand on that, make sure there's, in the full information.
I can make it simple, show me the documentation before I vote, that the EPA is agreeing to put more money in this settlement. I don't think nobody can show me no agreement.
Councilmember Mays, I think you, uh, sorry, I think, uh, you know, it, it's, it's well understood that the EPA is not a party to this settlement agreement, uh...
That's correct.
And, that, yes, and, you know, but, the fact is, is that the cases against the EPA that are being brought by, uh, by various of the plaintiff's attorneys, um, are pending and will continue to be litigated, just the same way that the cases against Veolia and Land will continue to be litigated, and the cases against the banks will continue to be litigated. Now, the, if, as you've said, the plaintiff's attorneys who are litigating those cases, and who are litigating the cases against the city, are all highly skilled attorneys, uh, with strong staffs that are, that are working ridiculously tirelessly for the citizens of Flint here. Um, and when we, when we talk about the settlement here being a floor, not a ceiling, I think you know, as well as me, that...
I ain't talking about it, that's what, that's what the mayor saying, I just wanna hear the details legally and not the rhetoric.
Right, and I guess the details that you're asking would be that, the, that recovery against those other defendants, the EPA, Veolia, Land, um, those, you know, those are going to be, any recovery that would come against those defendants is going to be on top of the settlement, uh, agreement that, that, uh, you're voting tonight, whether to, whether the city will join, um...
Point of order. Madam President, are you muted?
Yes, I am, I'm trying not to add to the static. What is your point of order? What is your point of order, Ms. Galloway?
My point of order is, Madam President, we are well off of this motion. And so I'm asking that you would bring it back around and, and that we will vote on the motion that is on the floor.
Um, you're correct, Ms. Galloway. They've led me so far afield, I forgot we were on the discussion on the motion. All right, I, I'd just like to say then, I think-
Point of information, Madam President, point of information. To you or Ms. Galloway. Doesn't the motion have to do with some specific communications and/or objections?
Mr. Mays, it's just a motion to allow our attorney to file these things. If we have a response to the motion, if we have objections later, it's just giving our attorney to permission to file what we need filed. That's all this motion is about.
Yeah, that-
This is Janelle.
Um, Janelle?
She's already voted on that motion.
Well, we did vote on it. Well, the point of order is-
To my knowledge, there's no motion on the floor.
No motion on the floor. We talking about- So I'm asking you not to rule me out of order.
Okay, all right, all right. So I don't need to respond to the point of order because actually we have voted on it. What was the vote again on that? Janelle, what was the vote on that again?
Eight, eight, yes, the one-
Ah, okay. All right.
So, Ms. Mays, so- We're in discussion before we get to voting on the other thing. If a third one come, if it don't, we still in that special order or whatever for discussion on the lawsuit. And so I don't agree with that model.
Mr. Mays, I have something pertinent I'd like to tell you from the AG that might add to this discussion. Are you willing to yield the floor for a few minutes?
If you give it back, I ain't gonna keep it and hog it long. I ain't been doing it all night. I've been trying to make some points, ask some questions, and then get out of there. And I'll continue. So get out here for that.
Thank you. I think that this pertinent to the discussion and is pertinent to council to know this. Okay, so I had a conversation today with Attorney General Dana Nessel, and we were talking about these issues and the concerns that councils raised in these many meetings. And, um, she had reminded me about lawsuits that are still out there to come, the EPA, the Veolia, the Land, et cetera. And she said while she can't make any, and she gave me permission to tell council this, while she can't make any guarantees, okay, she said that she is very willing to sit down with council, with everyone, to list the things that council feels are being, I, this is my word, kind of shortchanged in the water settlement agreement, and, um, that she could be in constant communication with council and the governor, and she's willing to set up a discussion. So if, if somehow council feels that this settlement and whatever the agreement is finally is not satisfactory, she thinks there may be an opportunity, she's not sure, but to correct some of these shortcomings, again, my word, with these other lawsuits. So I just wanted council to be aware of that. Um-
Madam President?
Uh, Mr. Mays, I said I would give him back the floor, and then you can have the floor, Ms. Worthing.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, and I'm not trying to bug my council colleagues who just wanna vote fast. It ain't, it's an artificial deadline. Ain't no deadline. This'll be probably one of the biggest things you might do on council. We've done some big things. We had to fight to get back to Detroit water. I'm familiar with the bond carriers and the other people. That's part of the litigation. Mr. Berg, is, is ain't, is it anybody lawyers in the Levy Court who is stand, who is left outstanding, who can come in, in the middle of this settlement? Um, can the people from the other court, if you know who they are? I think that I know that the EPA is in a different judge's court. Wha- what else are we waiting for? If it's the floor and not the ceiling, we see a possible twenty million from the city. State should be paying us. But then you got twenty million from McLaren. If I'm McLaren, I might wanna opt in for twenty million too. And then you got one million for, for, for Roe. You know, how do y'all know? I might not want it to put the six million, or two million, or fifteen million, and keep five million. All I'm saying is y'all done packaged this thing up. My colleagues don't even wanna talk to the, um, insurance carrier, and they, we can't even be important enough to get them here. And, um, you know, y'all ain't asked us to talk to the insurance character, carrier in executive session, but these are all relevant people. Um, Dana Nessel, Attorney General Nessel must understand it. We in a process. It's show and tell. Show these residents how these checks won't be over a thousand dollars in one category. Show these residents all of the blood lead level and, uh, bone lead level that's necessary, even for their children. Only one lawyer firm got them. People arguing about that. This thing is structured in a way where it could leave so many people out. And I'm telling you, Ms. Galloway, this is the discussion. My colleagues would be doing the residents of this service, and the mayor too, to not know these nuances, to not be able to talk specifics before you vote, not show you a clear path. Mr. Berg, it's the same lawyers that wanna drop the people opting out. Gonna be the same lawyers litigating against the EPA and others?
Uh, I, I think the answer to that is, in some cases, yes, and in some cases, no. But many of them will be the-
And it will be the same lawyers who will come up with these same, possibly, maybe. Maybe they'll learn from this. They'll come up with the same percentages and the same qualifications. We don't even know that yet. But we gotta take this one, and we gotta make sure that folks is included. We can't depend on lawyers who done already reached a settlement. I don't, do, is lawyers arguing about their percentage of money yet that you know of? Cause I hear some murmurings.
Uh, we, we are not, uh, involved at all in any discussions between the plaintiff's attorneys regarding, uh, their fees, if that was your question.
Right, so you representing us, and you don't know as much as I know about lawyers maybe doing a little lightweight bickering over what these fees will be. Now Judge Levy will set them. She'll decide if they get the whole thirty-three and a third that the law allows. She'll decide if they get twenty-three percent or twenty-five percent. But whatever is decided, we know what the percentage is and the qualifications for people right now. And so I'm saying y'all should slow down. Come to us and say, "Hey, look, this is a proposed settlement. We just getting a look at it. Y'all just getting a look at it. Let's spend quality time," and, and y'all been doing that. Remember what we saying. Lawyers have did a good job. They deserve to be paid. We just wanting to continue, and if we don't like what they brought, don't force it down approach. Don't get mad. It's our turn. Let us look at the checks that will come to us, analyze it, understand it, and then let us hear from the people we represent. Let us talk to the insurance carrier. Let us decide if we wanna ask the state to put twenty million with us. They the wrongdoers. So I'm just, want my colleagues to don't jump so fast to spend your money. I, and, and I'm, I'm gonna take a breath. I told y'all that when we had a twenty-four million dollar fund balance, and people were saying, "Spend it prematurely." You pay part of the payment and keep the money. So it's all relevant, and I'll listen to my colleagues again. Not all of them, but some of them.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Uh, now, we're still in discussion prior to getting to the actual resolution. And before I let Ms. Worthing have the floor, I, it has occurred to me that we haven't taken care of one little issue that is really important to expedite matters. How, how is council going to choose a law firm to work with? Would you like to appoint a subcommittee? Is it going to have to be done, presented to all of council with a vote of all council? What does council think is the best way to handle this? Um, is my question, but, uh, I, I guess I will give Ms. Worthing the floor first, and then I would like it back in order to a- ask council how they'd like to deal with this. It's an important piece of business that we didn't deal with. Ms. Worthing?
Thank you. Um, I understand that you want to ask that question, but I wanted the floor because I'd like to, uh, make a motion to end discussion and then vote on Resolution two zero zero four eight eight.
Ms., Ms. Worthing, are you asking for that motion to include the companion resolution? Are we voting on that separately?
Oh, yeah, separately. I just want to end discussion and then start going into these motions.
Point of order.
What's your point of order, Mr. Mays?
Um, does, if we in discussion, okay, I ain't gonna say nothing. I'm just gonna listen. I'm sorry. I'll take it back.
Okay. Well, the motion is basically to end discussion and move on to the resolutions. Resolution, resolutions, plural, uh, on the settlement. Is there a second to that motion?
Madam Chair?
Uh, Mr. Davis?
I gladly second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Ms. Worthing, and then Ms., Ms. Worthing, and then Mr. Mays?
No, they can go first. I'll wait till last.
No, I think Mr. Davis, let him go first.
Okay, Mr. Davis, Ms. Worthing, and then Mr. Mays?
Thank you, Ms. Worthing, for endorsing. Uh, my question, if we are defendants, which we are, uh, my understanding, this is to Mr. Berg, or should I say, in order attorneys, our council, we have no say in terms of the judge preliminary ruling. So it would be wise for us to move this and jump on board without, like my colleague, Mr. Santino stated earlier. So we won't get bogged down on this subject for no reason no, any longer, because we are defendants. And ain't nothing we could do or say or change this train that left the station. And I stand to be corrected, and I thank my whole colleagues for endorsing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, Mr., or is it Ms. Worthing, and then Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I just actually agree with Mr. Davis on this. We're defendants, not plaintiffs. I still want us to, you know, uh, I still want us to, uh, you know, make our, uh, wants known. And I'm for our own attorney and all of that, as we've already voted. But we are the defendants, and it's just clear to me that only reasonable way to vote is vote yes. Uh, and, and, and we've kind of, we've discussed this to death at this point.
Okay, any other discussion? Oh, it's, uh, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna address both my colleagues because this is a motion to end discussion on it. This discussion won't end. Even if you end discussion and the motion passed to get to the resolution, if that's meaning you in in discussion now. Let me say this. They telling you the deadline ain't to the thirty-first. I already know from listening to the podcast, Mr. Davis, the train ain't left the station. What you vote here tonight is gonna be all in the news. The Detroit news is listening to this. I've talked to them. They go, they say they gonna call me after this meeting. Maybe they gonna call y'all too. But the train ain't left the station. The train is at the station. The message that you send tonight, yay, nay, abstain, or postpone, is being watched. This is the station. What the city of Flint say about its own residents and the water settlement speaks volumes across the nation. I'm not just getting calls from Flint. I mean, it's the most calls I done got since I've been a council person. Local people, people from out of state, the train ain't left the station. The spotlight is on this station. I wouldn't let myself be seen voting on something I haven't properly vetted and researched. I guarantee you, it's a lot of misunderstanding, and it can't be understood until you hear whether that insurance company is actually saying boldly, "Take this twenty million to leave it. I don't care what policy y'all paid for, year after year." That don't even make sense. You should wanna talk to them. You should wanna postpone it until a later date. If you got all your information, let others get theirs. As long as you meet the deadline. We've met many deadlines, and you're hearing your attorneys, the one you like, saying the deadline is the thirty-first. The deadline wasn't yesterday. It wasn't last meeting. Information and details is just coming out. Don't do yourself like this in front of your residents. Some residents know more details than others. It'll get out, and then eventually, checks will hit. Do you know everybody is looking at the city of Flint, the main plaintiffs, the people we represent to see if we don't jump on this? Some people, politicians, who ain't got nothing under their belt successful. Criminal charges have been dropped. That wasn't a success yet. Will they be recharged? People want some money they built. Mayors, governors. I care about the people, and I care about the municipality. That's why I was saying, hold on to that twenty-four million dollar fund balance. You might could've got by sending six million, ten million. Now you looking at the same twenty million that the mayor said was lost. It was never lost. It was there. He didn't know about it, cause he wasn't in office. Now y'all done helped them spend it. And now you got twenty million you wanna spend and leaving the city naked of coverage in that vein. So think about it, Mr. Davis. You should give it to the state who got way more money than us, them outstanding lawsuits that we already know. It ain't just Val Washington, it's Lois Fletcher. It's people who gonna opt out. You know, before I take a check for five, six hundred dollars, I want these good attorneys who gonna get paid. I want these good attorneys. Litigate, you don't always have to take your first settlement. Why they do that? I don't wanna put a timeline on it, but if the city of Flint rejected, you don't think that the judge looks at that when she decides whether she accept it or not? That's the process. It's time for individuals, council people, residents, to look at it before they sign on the dotted line. And so whenever we get to it, it's gonna be a motion to postpone, and I hope that everybody do the right thing. The night ain't the deadline, Mr. Davis, or Mr. Worthing, Ms. Worthing. Just learn what-
Wrapping up here? Your time is up.
Madam President?
Madam President, Madam President, I was about done, but time ain't up. We suspended the rules, don't you forget?
No, Mr. Mays, we didn't suspend the rules to, wait a minute. We only suspended one rule. and that was to not have to have a motion on the floor prior to the discussion of the resolution. That was the only thing we suspended.
Oh, I thought we suspended them, that we wasn't gonna be in them rigorous discussions as well, and time and the topic.
Nope, nope, that's what- that's not what the motion was. Uh, any more discussion on this motion? Ms. Galloway?
Um, I just wanna say- I just wanna say to the residents, um, there are a lot of mixed, um, feelings about what's going on. And I think that I have, I can only speak for myself, um, I've had the pleasure of serving this council on the council for seven years, and there's only two of us, um, on the council. Nothing to say from- for- of my colleagues, but only two of us that have served from the very beginning, that have seen the genesis of what happened. That sat through meeting after meeting as we watched the residents bring in brown water that seemed totally impossible. Um, I can speak for myself, where I had the ability to sit with Senator Sabanoff in a hurly meeting room with, at the time, President, um, Josh Freeman and Vice President, um, Juan Tres Davis, being told that, um, there was nothing that could be done on the federal level. Um, sitting in the co- committee room of the council with, um, Congressman Kildee, where the news and everyone was there, and I remember being hopeless in fourteen, saying, "What do you do when the very people in the authority over you are not listening?" And him- him saying, "What you do is vote." When nobody listened until Rachel Maddow came and did a live show taping inside of the city of Flint. One of the things I won't do is put my name on a vote like this. And unfortunately, we can ignore the- the documentation that says that race was a factor, that this was in fact systemic racism, not just based on race, but also on class. And the unfortunate thing is, when you live as part of a government that doesn't see the color of your skin actually whole, you don't even know what the picture of wholeness looks like. And so, I won't be intimidated, I stand on the same principle that I did with the Gleywood deal. I believe that there is way more to this. I am disappointed that- that so many of my colleagues are here, and they believe that we have no authority. That is so incorrect. And so, I say to the residents that are, um, under, you know, that have chose me at a time like this, that I'm not an attorney, but I-
Ms. Galloway?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but you're going far afield, as did Mr. Mays, on the actual motion, on the motion. And- and what I'm hearing is your debate might be more appropriate when we actually get to...
I don't agree with that, Madam President. The motion on the floor-
Well, then, all right, go ahead.
Thank you.
It's the end discussion.
Well, you interrupted my time. The- the motion on the floor is to end the debate and go into voting for the resolution in support of. I've heard my colleagues, and so, this is my-
No, Ms. Galloway, Ms. Galloway, correction.
You keep, well, through you to the-
Well, you keep misstating things, Ms. Galloway. And- and yes, we will make sure you have your full time. But you- you were misstating things. The motion didn't say to go right into voting for it. It said to move on to the- the resolution number.
You do realize that's the same thing, Madam President. It means-
No, it isn't, because there's also discussion. Ms. Galloway, you- you complete, you have your full time.
You have information. Yes, what is- there's a point of information.
What is your point of information, Ms. Worthing?
Does Ms. Galloway realize that the chair is correct, uh, that Ms. Galloway debating the motion that hasn't been made yet? This is just to end discussion, so we can make a motion and vote it up or down. That's the same motion, and- and that's not a real point of information. And so, this is my time, you guys. And so, I will say what I wanna say. You wanna go on to a motion that you've already made up your mind, you have already said on the record, the motion maker has already said on the record that she is going to support the motion. And so, it is proper, she has made her position known. And so, the reality is this, this is my time, and I won't be supporting it, and I look forward to more debates.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Um, I would just like to add that there is actually one more option, not just to vote on the resolution up or down, uh, but there's also an opportunity to amend or postpone. There's also an opportunity to amend Resolution 200488 to include the companion resolution, so that's an option as well. Uh, okay, so, is there any more discussion on this motion to end discussion? Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Greer?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yes.
Vote is six yes, three no.
Six yes, three no, the motion carries. Okay, that then brings us to resolution. And the first resolution is 200488. What is the pleasure of this body? Mr. Guerra?
Make a motion that we approve resolution, resolution stated.
Motion's been made, sir.
Madam Pres-
Give me time to ask for a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam President.
Ms. Worthing, you asked first.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis?
It's imperative that we get this done, because we're defendants, let's safeguard the city and the residents. And I'm so happy for this, um, President, opportunity that the residents gonna be safe, as well as the city. And on the backside of this thing, we gonna make all amendments out there, and I'll make all our adjustments with our team of attorneys, and show the residents how strong the team we really have. And I thank y'all for indulging this evening. Do y'all hear what I'm saying? I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Well, people over speaking each other. Who's next?
Santino.
Madam-
Santino. Mr. Guerra?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. Uh, I know we've had lots of discussions on this. Uh, and I just wanna say that the reason I'll be supporting this, is that I personally believe this is the best interest of the city to follow, uh, not only for the city of Flint itself, but for all the residents, uh, who are definitely impacted by this. I would hate to see residents who have already suffered so much throughout this crisis have to suffer even more in the long run if we don't approve this now. And I think this is the best decision for the city, and the most financially, uh, economically wise decision as well. Uh, so I hope to do this fast today, uh, and I understand my colleagues have the right to vote however they want, however they believe is the best way for the city. Uh, but let's- let's get to it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. And who's next?
Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, you have the floor.
Thanks. Um, well, I guess, I think you all know where I stand on this resolution. I think we need to send a strong message and vote no on this resolution. This is saying that if we vote to approve this twenty million dollars, that we are voting to, um, go into this settlement with the parameters that's already set up and everything else with- that- that goes on with this proposed settlement. And I'm just not in agreeance with it. And so, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winfrey Carter. Ms. Galloway?
Thank you so much, ma'am. Um, just- just, you know, um, I- I- I, it's funny, I found, um, my statement that I made when we were, um, forced into voting on the Gleywood deal. And I will say to the-
Hello? I think we lost- Ms. Galloway? Yeah, I thought we lost you. Go ahead.
Uh-huh, okay. Um, I- I just wanna say to this, um, the community that I don't know, I can't remember how many people are a part of this lawsuit, but this is an unfortunate time. But what I can say is, we are, um, strong, we are resilient. I will not place my name on this. There are some council people on this council that are making decisions that are gonna be lifelong decisions, like the Gleywood thirty-year deal. Um, for me, a proper settlement would be, one, that every dollar that any paying customer on the Flint City Water during the time that it was deemed that that water was not drinkable should be refunded. After those credits, they should be refunded all of their money. Two, they should be compensated for a bond debt for the Gleywood, I mean, for the KWA. We were in a bond debt when we were nine million dollars in an emergency manager. We should've never been put in that bond, only for that bond debt to be the very thing that they threatened us with, to say, "If you don't sign off on this and give your rights to the new KWA pipeline, to the Gleywood Water Authority, you're gonna go into bankruptcy." And so, this community has consistently been bullied. This- this community has consistently not had proper representation. And what I will say is this. It's very difficult for a community to ask to be made whole when in this country, African-Americans have never, ever been whole. So you can't possibly look at us and think we deserve to fight tooth and nail to make sure that all of our voices are heard. And so, I will not be supporting this. There are many of my colleagues that they're done. Twenty twenty-one, they're done. They already know they're done right now. And yet, they would be willing to make a decision that will impact this community when they are long gone, living somewhere else. And so, I won't do it. And I will remind this council, when we made the decision, and for the pastors, I thank God for the pastors. But I think in this one, I thought about the twelve spies. And there were ten that gave a report, and in democracy, they would've looked like they made the right decision. But we know based on the story, that the Bible says that that was an evil report, and it caused the- the community to be setback for forty years. And so, I just ask that God would have mercy on the decisions that are being made on this community. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President.
Madam President.
Ms. Worthing had asked first, and then Mr. Mays. Ms. Worthing?
Well, uh, I'm not gonna dispute anything that Ms. Galloway just stated. However, again, the issues are being confused. Uh, we don't have a say in the six hundred million dollar settlement. Counsel's not a plaintiff. Uh, and so- Point of information, point of information.
What is your point of information, Ms. Galloway?
Does Councilwoman Worthy realize that if we didn't have a say, this vote wouldn't be before us? Um, I didn't interrupt, Ms. Galloway, but I- I will answer her question. Uh, no, you're incorrect. We are not a plaintiff, and the reason why we are voting is we're voting as a defendant. We're voting yes or no on the twenty million dollars. And whether we're gonna join this, um, entire settlement with the insurance money or pay it all out on our own. And I'm not gonna do that to my constituents. So, you have a right to your interpretation of what's going on, but I'm confident in mine. I'm confident that we are defendants, not plaintiffs, and that we are in this moment voting to defend the city against millions and millions of dollars, uh, from other plaintiffs who want to sue us because of the Flint Water Crisis. And just as others have stated, I refuse to put my constituents through more pain, more financial and economic suffering by voting no, and then leaving us open for millions of more dollars. So, I appreciate that Dana Nessa will talk to us about our concerns about the six hundred million dollar part. Um, that's great, because she knows that we represent our constituents, and they're not happy with that part. But counsel doesn't get to vote on that. So you can be impassioned all you want, and- but it- this isn't what we're voting on. And so, it's just, it's really not relevant. We're voting on, our beginning is the twenty million dollars in the insurance for the city to be part of this settlement, because they're suing us, they're suing us and the state. So, uh, or, we're gonna say, "No, insurance is not gonna pay that twenty million dollars anymore." And then, we're open up to many, many, many more millions, uh, by not doing it. So, again, I remain confident in my yes vote. Um, yes, I'm sure. I thank you, Ms. Galloway, for saying I feel com- you know, my colleagues feel confident. Yes, I do. I know I'm voting the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I kinda smile at some of the naivety that I hear from my colleagues. I mean, they're so robust to vote on this, and they excited to vote yes on stuff they don't even know all the details of, in my best opinion. I know one of my colleagues upset this more than once, I think. This colleague said, "Whenever there's two," in this case, it might be me and Ms. Fields, ain't that kinda interesting? If there's two, three, or four, who have something that they wanna find out or resolve, we should give them that courtesy. See, before you finish listening to my voice, you gonna hear me maybe put a motion, because we ain't on no deadline. We can do it in three days, five days, six days. Where are y'all feeling this pressure? And the lawyers who you respect telling you our deadline is December the thirty first. Why wouldn't you want me to look at the nuances? And quit saying we don't have a say. You got one of the biggest says. That's why the media is watching. You are not a lawyer. You are a politician. You are a representative of the people. In this case, you got a dual responsibility. You gotta look out for what's in the best interest of the corporation, the municipality. And you still better look out for those people who vote you in. If you look at the hearings that was held in Washington, one of the big things that kept coming up in the water crisis, and people was confused. "Oh, well, the council voted to switch the water." Counsel ain't voted to switch the water. Counsel voted to go to the Flint River. That's the same thing gonna happen here. You better be careful what you put your vote on. Because I've seen council people come and go, it won't be too much longer before these people hear the details of this settlement. People gonna be tripping. All this publicity, all these good lawyers, and I keep telling you, they gonna get paid, they deserve to be paid. Millions. More than what they spent. They came here because it was a legal prize. They came here because they were good. What you're saying to them is, "Oh, this the first settlement. We don't know the details." Remember this, Ms. Galloway and Mr. Winfrey. And y'all give me more time. We ain't gotta vote on this tonight. Y'all remember, we had a deal with the state. We asked for immediately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They ain't got it yet. They agreed to give us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay these folks water bills if we would vote a certain way. That was the state, y'all remember that? Through you to Ms. Galloway, through you to Ms. Winfrey, y'all, Mr. Winfrey, y'all remember that?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I remember it.
So, Ms. Worthing, Mr. Davis, y'all might be a little newer than me. Ain't nobody shook our hand. Ain't none of these people came before us. The lawyers who finna get their cut if it settle, I wanna keep them working, they very good lawyers. They've been waiting at every turn. This is a proposed settlement. It's the first one. Um, if you go to court, people will make one settlement. If it's rejected, they'll come back and make another. If it's rejected, they'll come back and make another. I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Winfrey, when the motion come to postpone, we in the middle of COVID nineteen. Do you know how many churches and town hall meetings and stuff we would've been and had? It's difficult. That's why I said we need to talk about this while the residents can hear. We in COVID nineteen. Do you know that you shouldn't be in a rush and create artificial deadlines when everybody's listening? And they saying, "Man, is Worthy and Mr. Davis and Santino being logical? Why is they rushing this? Who are they talking to? Are they reading the papers? Is they looking at the three percent?"
Point of order.
What is your point of order? What rule has been broken, Ms. Worthy?
He is speaking on what others are saying and doing. Uh, and he's not speaking for me. So I- I would ask that he speak on...
Ms. Worthy, a point of order means a rule has been broken. What rule has been broken? Can you give me the number?
I can't give you the number. I don't have the rules in front of me. But I'd like him to be...
Well, Ms. Worthy, that actually has not been a valid point of order. Uh, you have to- and I'm trying to be consistent with this with all council people. If you can't give me the number of a rule that's been broken so that I can look at it, I'm- I'm gonna have to, um, vote against your point of order.
Ms. Fields?
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, real quick. If I make a motion to postpone for three, four, five days, a week, and we- within that December thirty-first deadline, you see how quick we can meet and do it? Some of them say it's been talked to death, but there's some relevant information out there. So I wanna...
Mr. Mays, could you wrap up, please? Your time is...
Yeah, I wanna know which motion to postpone allows any debate and which ones don't before I make it.
Uh, I'm not clear on your question, Mr. Mays.
Ms. Galloway, you understand my question? If not, Madam President, through you to Ms. Galloway, is two or three motions to table postpone? One of them might allow a little discussion, and the other ones don't.
Okay, I- I see what you're saying. All right. To postpone, and I'm going by that little sheet that our former parliamentarian had given us, to postpone to a certain time or definitely, okay, requires debate, can be amended, uh, and is a majority vote. To postpone indefinitely...
I saw her. She was on there twice. But what I was trying to...
Excuse me. Wait a minute. Whoop. Excuse me, is... Who was speaking? Was that Janelle?
Please hold a moment longer. Someone will be right with you.
Janelle? Am I in the wrong? Can anybody hear me?
She on the line. Yeah, we can hear you. She on the line. She can hear you.
Oh, okay. So...
I'm here. I'm- I'm here. I'm sorry.
Okay. A- all right. So to postpone indefinitely is requires debate, requires a majority vote. So they bo- they both require debate, but only the postpone to a certain time or definitely can be amended. To lay on the table, however, cannot be debated and cannot be amended.
So the one not indefinitely, what's the other one that can be postponed but can be amended?
Point of order.
Just a moment. Postpone to a certain time or definitely. What is your point of order, Ms. Worthy?
Um, Mr. Mays' time's up. It's time for- to listen to someone else.
Well, Mr. Mays, that is true. And we still have a second... We still have a second round to go through.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
What is your point of information, Ms. Galloway?
Are you aware, and maybe you can ask the, um, the, um, keeper of the record, are you aware that you and Ms. Worthy took up some of his time with her not being able to clarify what her point of order is? So can you, through you to the clerk, was his time stopped while that was going on?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. May I make the motion? Because when you talking to somebody and, you know, I don't know if that's just administration...
No more debate, but I will allow you to...
Can I make the motion?
...intertend. Yes.
Okay, you said wrap up. I wanna make a motion to postpone this. Do we have a council meeting Monday?
We have one on the twenty-first.
Okay, and that's the same day.
This is Monday.
I'd make a motion to postpone this to Monday and hope that my colleagues would give us a little time, Ms. Fields, and I so move.
The motion has been made to postpone Resolution two zero zero four eight eight till Monday. Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
Madam Chair?
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I'll support that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes, just a couple of quick things. Uh, I heard my colleague, Ms. Galloway, said that there are some people on this council that know that they're not going to be here, uh, past this year. And so they don't have a problem with just voting up or down, whichever way. And- and I wanna say if there are those...
Point of information.
What is your point of information, Ms. Galloway?
Does Councilman Winfrey realize that is not what, how I said it or what I was saying? And I'm asking him to not say my statements personally or out of context.
Excuse me, Ms. Galloway. That is exactly what you said. Mr. Winfrey, proceed.
Yeah, and that- and that's fair, Ms. Galloway. But I'm- I'm just saying, my point is this. If that is how council members make decisions, that's- shame on them. Shame on them. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is, uh, I am ready to vote. But listen, if my colleagues need more time and more information, I'm willing to be a partner and grant that time. I'll be here, uh, Councilman Mays, if that's when you wanted to, uh, to discuss it again and some time to get more information or provide more information to your constituents or our constituents. And if you do, please provide me with that information. I'm willing to do that. Because as you said, this is an important decision to make. And I don't think that we should be rushing it. Now, some folks can say, "Well, we've been talking about it and talking about it, so we're not rushing it." But how long a council person wants to talk about something has nothing to do with the next council person, how long they wanna talk about it. So if my colleagues, uh, want more information, I'm willing to do that. So again, uh, I'm- even though I'm ready to vote, Councilman Mays, I will vote in the affirmative to postpone this until Monday. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Is there any other discussion on the motion to postpone?
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Thank you for indulging. Yes, as, uh, Councilwoman Galloway stated, I think that's very inappropriate to- to put that out there about that twenty twenty-one piece when it's a very sensitive topic in this community. Everybody, some people just have a solid mind made up what's best in their mind for their city as in their residents. And we just coming out of recess meeting. How long do we have to just keep going over and over? Especially when you'll never be voting in our formative. And people politicking, that's what really getting to me now, because I'm adamant about the success of the residents. But don't shortchange my- my enthusiasm as if I'm trying not to- to do what's right by residents according to other people's opinion out in the streets of twenty twenty-one election. Don't do that. Thank you very much. My indulgence.
Madam Chair, Santino.
Mr. Greer? Go ahead. Mr. Greer?
Can you hear me?
Now I can.
Yeah, I think regardless, whenever somebody's gonna be in office, however long, I think that all of my colleagues, whether I agree with them or not, always have the best interest of their residents when they vote. I- I wouldn't- I wouldn't question any of their thoughts, even though I disagree with a lot of them. And I'm not gonna support this whole postponement because this is constantly what it's going. And honestly, I- some councilors have stated that they're not gonna support it. Probably abstain. Others are gonna vote yes. I think we know how we're gonna vote. I don't know what the... It just seems like it's a constant postpone, postpone for some, maybe some other agenda. I- I really don't know. But I mean, let's just vote. We're here.
Madam President?
Any other... Ms. Worthy? And then Mr. Griggs? And then at some point, I have something to say. Go ahead, Ms. Worthy.
I hear we don't have enough vote, um, to- to just vote on this now. I- I'm still voting no. Uh, I- I don't know how much longer we can talk about this. I mean, nothing new is coming out of this. Absolutely nothing. Can we just please vote on this? Uh, and it- and then we can move on to other city business. Uh, we either yes, we're either a yes or a no. At this point, I- I can tell you exactly how every single person's gonna vote. So why are we postponing this? You know, um, the- the residents of Flint are listening. And- and really, the longer we do this, the more conflicting it gets.
What is your point of information, Mr. Mays?
Would Ms. Worthy be willing to tell us how each and everybody gonna vote?
Ms. Worthy, proceed.
Thank you. Uh, and- and everyone's listening. There's nothing that anyone can say that's gonna change my mind at this point. There's nothing I'm gonna say that's gonna change anyone else's mind. I don't know if this is like a political stunt, because maybe, uh, some people know the residents are confused. So voting yes would make them look bad. I'm not a politician, I guess. I'm gonna vote what's best for the city. I'm not happy with the six hundred million because my constituents aren't happy, but it doesn't change the fact that I'm not gonna have any influence on that, on this vote in particular. Um, so my vote will be yes. Let's get this over with.
Thank you, Ms. Worthy. Mr. Griggs?
Yes, uh, I'd like to refer to back a few minutes ago when Mr. Mays made a comment that, uh, we shouldn't have gone into closed session, executive session. I disagree. There's two reasons we should've gone into executive session and didn't. One was so that we, all nine of us, would make more intelligent decisions on this litigation. The second reason is we could also avoid the illusion that we have an omnipotent councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. If no one else who hasn't spoken for the first time wants to speak, I would like to say something. Okay. If this had not had a motion on the floor to postpone, okay, I would- I've been going back and forth in the- on this. And if it were only the resolution to approve up or down, I would've been a no vote. But now I've been presented with a companion resolution that would allow me to vote yes. But I would only vote yes if this two zero zero four eight eight were amended to include this companion resolution. In that case, I would be a yes vote. Because as I read this, it basically gives us what we have been asking for in the main, um, and also knowing that the judge is the one who has the final say on whether this settlement is approved or not. This would just be us agreeing to our part of it. And if we are allowed with this companion resolution, which I understand most of council hasn't even had an opportunity to read, um, were included part and parcel with two zero zero four eight eight, um, I would vote yes on it. So I'm gonna vote yes on the postponement so people have an opportunity to read this.
Madam President?
And see... Ms. Worthy?
I thought you were done. Are you done?
Yeah, in essence, I'm done. Okay, second round, Ms. Worthy.
Yes. Um, I would make that motion and be in favor of that motion if this is not, um, postponed. So if we vote no on postponing, I will make that motion to include the companion resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Worthy. Anyone else like to speak for the second time?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Davis?
Thank you for indulging. Does this companion resolution getting separate and different, uh, uh, council or legal staff at this time? Yes or no?
That's already been decided, Mr. Davis. And it's separate.
I don't need no more questions. Thank you. I don't need nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Um... Well, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Point of information.
Yes? What is your point of information?
Can you just clarify the vote again for this one, please?
The vote is to postpone two zero zero four eight eight until December twenty-first. Anything else? Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthy?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Greer?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Vote is four yes, five no.
Four yes, five no. The motion fails. All right? Ms. Worthy, you have the floor. Yes, Ms. Worthy.
Yeah, I would like amend the motion on the floor to include the companion resolution, uh, that you read earlier.
The motion's been made to approve Resolution two zero zero four eight eight if it includes the companion resolution. Is there a second?
Madam President?
Mr. Griggs?
I'll start then.
It's been seconded. Moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, I'm very disappointed in you. Now, I'm a decent council person and I like to read and look and understand something. Now, here this council in front of the whole city, the Detroit News and everybody, is fixing to try to vote to approve something I ain't even touched and had in my hand. That's very disrespectful. Ms. Fields, the votes was there to give us time to even have it looked at. Now here, we done voted for independent council and we done got a resolution that I ain't even touched a scene. I went over the details of the history of it I went over the details of the history of it and we rushed over it. And here it is fixing to go into a resolution or companion. And earlier, I heard lawyers say, "If you try to change stuff in doing your resolution with conditions," and maybe companion and conditions ain't the same. But y'all voting happily for conditions that you concern yourself with in order to cover up a yes vote on a companion resolution we ain't even all had input in yet. And so we back to normal. We back to normal. Five people with a lack of compassion and understanding gone railroad something down. I can't speak for the other councilpersons 'cause I have not seen it. That just ain't the councils that I know in the past. And so, believe me, when I heard you voting no after them five yes votes to postpone and get this stuff together and you had gave a good speech about this companion resolution and everybody on this council, including Mr. Griggs, done argued about add-ons. Mr. Griggs was so hard lying on an add-on that he didn't even think you should be able to have add-ons. And here come the add-on companion resolution that's worse than the ones that he complained about that I do touch and see. And you heard when this was attempted to get us and y'all adopting it that fast without vetting or review? Lord have mercy. That's all I can say. Lord have mercy. And Ms. Fields, the meeting was going well. And so, did you help work on the companion resolution, Ms. Fields? Are you muted?
Sorry, yes, I'm muted. I said my response was, no, I did not.
And you know the details of it already?
Mr. Mays, I know the details. Mr. Mays-
I don't.
Let me respond. Let me respond.
Well, can I move to suspend the rules so we can go over it before I vote on it? And I would so move.
Well, I was gonna offer another suggestion of to recess for five to ten minutes.
I second.
I don't know what you're seconding. Are you seconding Mr. Mays' motion?
I'm for Mays.
Okay, Mr. Mays, restate your motion.
Yeah, if we fixing to get into a companion resolution to accompany something that I've never seen, my motion was to suspend the rules so we can spend at least a couple minutes on it. I- I just don't understand how a council can vote in the blind and ain't vetted this thing. I know I haven't in touch to have seen it.
Okay, the motion's been made to suspend the rules. Is there a second? Mr. Davis seconded-
As it relates to the discussion, as it relates to the discussion on this companion resolution.
Yes. Uh, is there discussion on that motion to suspend the rules as it relates to this companion resolution?
Madam President?
Ms. Galloway?
Just, um, based on the suspension of the rules, um, I won't be supporting it. Uh, Madam President, I- I think that I'm disappointed. You said on the record that, um, you were going to support a simple postponement to a Monday meeting, which we already had, so that your colleagues could look it over. Um, and then you didn't honor what you said you would do. And so I won't be supporting, um, um, this motion. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Mr. Davis?
Thanks for indulging. Anyway, I could postpone, uh, withdraw my motion to postpone to give the colleagues time to- to look over this companion, to be fair?
Um-
Point of information.
I think- just a moment. I think you can withdraw your second. Mr. Mays, what's your point of information?
They done voted not to postpone till Monday. He could reconsider or he could put another postponement date. But you- you gotta know what you voting as a companion.
Whatever means necessary.
You know, Mr. Davis, I don't know the answer to your question. Just a minute. Can you let me finish a sentence? That's why we need a parliamentarian. What I wanted to do was to recess for ten minutes to give everybody an opportunity to read this. So then if they had discussion. But somebody jumped in ahead of me, um, with this, I don't know what, suspend the rules. So does anyone know, including you, Mr. Mays, can someone- do we have to vote on allowing Mr., uh, Davis to withdraw his second?
Oh, Madam President, in order to do that, that motion and then voted on it and passed, the withdrawal ain't nullifying the vote. You could postpone to another time or to a special meeting or some of that nature. And it's different from the motion to postpone to Monday. Maybe they wanna do it, I don't know, what's today? Um, Thursday, um, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, I don't know. But all I do know is that Mr. Davis seemed to be considerate in order to have time to go through this companion. And if we ain't doing it tonight, we sure can't do it under the five-minute rule for me. So maybe Mr. Davis, so don't worry about withdrawing your motion. Maybe you can be creative. Maybe your colleagues will reconsider. That takes six votes extraordinary. Maybe you'll make another motion to put it at another time. But it's just, I wouldn't do myself like this in public as a council. Ms. Fields, we were there, but then you went south. Somebody should know that somebody gotta spend time on this before you just mix it with such a serious piece of business as a- as this. There's a variety of ways to do.
Mr. Mays, I didn't go south, okay? The addition of this to the resolution made a difference for me. And it made a difference in my decision. So I just wanna get it the best way to allow people to have time to review this companion resolution. So if it requires a vote to allow Mr. Davis to withdraw his second, then I will allow that. I don't know if that's the correct parliamentary way to do it, but I will allow that. So, um, Mr. Davis wants to withdraw his- his support of that motion. Um, let's have a roll call on that to allow him to do that.
Point of information, I- I don't- I don't understand what we're doing now.
Mr.- Mr. Davis supported the motion to suspend the rules in order to talk about this. Okay, and then the motion that was on the floor was one to approve the settlement with the companion resolution attached. So if Mr. Davis withdraws his motion to suspend the rules, nobody has supported the motion to suspend the rules and we are back on the original motion. And some- some other vote could be made to reconsider or, uh, uh, perhaps my suggestion to recess for ten minutes to allow people to read it. There are some options here.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's have a roll call on allowing Mr. Davis to withdraw his support of the motion.
Was there support on that?
He was- that was his motion. I'm not making a motion, I'm just having a vote on whether to allow Mr. Davis to withdraw his support.
Point of order.
Yes, Ms. Galloway?
Madam President, don't we have to do a- a- a formal- because of the council rules say that once a motion has been made improperly seconded and repeated by the, um, Chair, it requires a vote of council to withdraw. So isn't it proper for a motion to be made improperly seconded, um, since that's what Councilman Davis is asking?
Frankly, Ms. Galloway, I- I'm not sure because we've got motions within motions within motions and it's getting very confusing. And I wish we had that expert here. Uh, but-
I can- I can tell you-
If so, then go ahead, Ms. Ms. Galloway. You make that motion.
No, I thought he made it and so he's just looking for a second.
He didn't make a motion per se, he just requested it. Mr. Davis, are you making the motion to allow yourself to withdraw your second?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there support for that motion?
Madam President.
Mr. Griggs? Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Griggs, I've gotten some static. Somebody's making noise. Did you support that motion?
I support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Oh, God. Ms. Galloway? Yes.
Madam President, I just wanted- I- I just wanted you to know that that was in the rules, Rule twenty-four. I just want- you were asking, you said you didn't know. It actually is in our rules, Rule twenty-four. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk. This motion is to allow Mr. Davis to remove his second on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Vote is nine yes, zero no.
Nine yes, zero no. The motion passes. So now I think this takes us back to Mr. Mays put the motion on the floor to suspend the rules. Is Mr. Mays willing to make a motion to remove his motion?
No, it can- it can die for a lack of second, um, if you ask it two or three times.
Okay. Um, is there a second to Mr. Mays' motion to suspend the rules? Is there a second to Mr. Mays' motion? Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second his motion.
Ms. Winfrey Carter has seconded the motion. Is there discussion? Is there discussion?
Yeah, Madam President.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam President, the ten-minute recess you talking about to read it, that ain't gonna, um, cure that. Once you read it, then you gotta go through a process of asking the city attorneys who drafted it about it. And sometime that could take a day or two or three, but that ain't the only reason for the postponement that I thought you understood. After all we've been through today, we even talked about getting an attorney. We even talked about the deadline wasn't until December thirty-first. I don't know how to understand a person who say, "I'm gonna vote for the postponement and then with the last discussion say, "But if this was amended on it, even though y'all ain't seen it and discussed it, "I could, um, vote for it." And so then I seen what happened after that. That's kinda, um, a letdown if we are really sincere. In ten minutes, a recess is kinda perfunctory, you know? I would move to recess this meeting until Friday, Tuesday, Saturday. I just don't- I just wanna pray on Sunday. But there's all kind of things we can say and do. And I don't care if the suspension of the rules to vet and discuss a, um, companion resolution is done in an open meeting or behind the scenes. I said I'll do all my discussions and thought processes open in an open meeting for the public and I'm enjoying the public hearing it. The public is able to analyze our thought patterns, our rationale, our logic, our honesty, our sincerity, our politicalmanship, and they'll make decisions. I've seen this movie before. I've seen this political movie over and over. And for those who think we are not in a political arena, you're fooling yourself. What a demonstration. So, thank you very. They can vote it up or down and come up with another vehicle, but I wanna wait to hear what it is as we try to put a companion resolution on this major resolution at a last minute. And if these- if this don't drive the point home, it never will.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. I'd like to say that I- first, I would like to say that I personally am willing to vote to reconsider the postponement, but it would- it would take six votes, okay? Only because for me, that made a difference. But I understand that for other councilpeople, that didn't make a difference. And maybe they didn't have this in front of them and have a chance to read it. So I was going to try a different vehicle to give councilmembers the means to be able to do so, okay? But if my suggestion, if council thinks this needs more than just a recess, they'd rather postpone the entire vote until they've had a chance to read this and absorb it till the twenty-first, I would be in support of a motion to reconsider. Um, but I'm not in mo- in support of a motion to suspend the rules. Any other discussion?
Madam President?
Ms. Galloway?
So- so what is the- what is the motion? Oh, so Madam President, I would make a motion, um, to postpone this to the council meeting on the twenty-first.
Ms. Galloway, I'm not sure we can do that in the middle-
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Um, no, I'm sorry. I make a motion to reconsider. Is it proper to do that? Is that-
In the middle of a vote to suspend the rules? I don't think so.
Oh, I- I'm sorry. I thought that that died. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry about-
Okay, so if there's any more discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
Madam President?
Ms. Worthing?
Um, I- I'm gonna vote no. I- I think there are people that are still politicking, uh, about this vote. It- Ms. Fields has said before that, um, she wanted this companion resolution. Uh, so she's not letting any- anyone down. Uh, she's voting the way that she- she wants to. Um, and I- I'm not gonna support, uh, suspending the rules. If we wanna make that motion to recess for a half hour as we all look at that, um, but we have talked about this companion resolution already in our demand. And so if we could just read it and think about it and then come back and vote on it, we can- we can get this over with. There are, you know, other business of- there's other business of the city. And we just really do not need to belabor this. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Worthing. Any other discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Galloway?
No.
Mr. Griggs?
No.
Ms. Worthing?
No.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
No.
Ms. Fields?
No.
Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Vote is four yes, five no.
Motion is four yes, five no. The motion fails to suspend the rules. That brings us back to, before anybody jumps in, just let me state this. We are in the middle of a motion to approve resolution two zero zero four eight eight. Any discussion?
Madam President?
Point of information, point of order, Madam President.
Ms. Galloway first? Wait a minute. You can't- it's one or the other, Mr. Mays.
Okay, point of- point of order.
What's your point of order? What rule has been broken, Mr. Mays?
The one where you mistake, where you have to state the motion properly. This is an amended motion, not to approve it, but to approve it with the add-on of the companion resolution, if I'm correct.
Oh, okay. Uh, easy to get confused. Janelle, could you verify what the act- what motion we're in the middle of? Oh, okay. Uh, easy to get confused. Janelle, could you verify what the act- what motion we're in the middle of?
Yes, that's correct. It's, uh, to- for two zero zero four eight eight. It includes the companion resolution, the amended motion.
Okay. All right, so that's the correct motion. Now, let's go to Ms. Galloway. Yes.
So- so Council President Fields, um, according to Rule twenty-two-one, a motion to reconsider can be made by the council person that voted in the affirmative on the motion?
Uh- I believe so, yes.
So- so is it proper for me to make a motion to reconsider a postponement to Monday's meeting?
I believe it is.
I still move.
Is there a second? Is there a second to reconsider? Ms. Winfrey?
I second the motion.
The motion is seconded. Discussion? Let me look at the, uh-
Madam President.
Uh, Mr. Mays, I'm trying to find this. Just a minute.
Rule twenty-two, Madam President.
Just a moment. Where is it, Ms. Galloway?
Rule twenty-two.
Rule twenty-two, thank you. Mr. Mays?
Yep. You giving me the floor?
I am.
Yeah, the only way I see this reconsideration passing, based upon what I'm hearing Mr. Davis say and what I'm hearing you say, we're looking for a vehicle to vet this companion resolution before we add it on. This is one of the right ways to do it, and I'm telling people, this is no game. This stuff just come up. Everybody's looking. I wanna look. I wanna see because it ain't Ms. Worthing's justice that Ms. Fields had some communications. We all should be able to have input before this document is voted upon. So, a half an hour of us reading it or looking, you know, it takes at least a half an hour session of going over it with the attorneys, and we can only do that in an open, public meeting. So, you do it now, you do it later, but you gotta do it. And so, I'm hoping that we have the six votes to reconsider and then try to get this back on track. Just everybody be patient. If them attorneys negotiated and looked at this in detail for months, some of them will say years, and have enough respect for yourself in a public, open meeting to let people see us at least look like we're trying to do stuff right. So I hope that we have the six votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Any other discussion on this vote to reconsider? Well, I- I would like to say, I- I wish I'd voted the first time to postpone because I really should've realized that it was enough for me to see the companion, but maybe it wasn't enough time for anybody else. And really, getting this two hours before the meeting wasn't sufficient time. And I understand that council has fatigue over this issue, the many, many hours and meetings that we've had over it. But we've gone this far, and I make a plea to my colleagues that the decision doesn't have to be made until the thirty-first. We do have a Monday on meeting, the twenty-first. At least allow your colleagues time to review this, and- and hopefully, we'll end up with a council that is able to vote for the settlement agreement, if they can buy into the companion resolution. At least give them the opportunity to do that. So, any other con- any other, uh, discussion on the motion to reconsider?
Yeah, Madam President.
Ms. Worthing?
I think it's quite apparent that I don't wanna vote for this. But if I do, what does this mean? Are we done for the night? Do we just go on to other business? 'Cause if it's still gonna talk about this, I- I've got a family. I- I'm gonna leave after this. Can- can I get an answer to that? What, uh, what happens if we postpone?
Ms. Worthing, then this issue and this- and the motion, okay, will, um, to accept- to vote for the water settlement with the companion resolution, which was on the floor, which is what we're reconsidering, or, no, we're reconsidering the motion to postpone, excuse me. So that motion goes forward until the twenty-first. And at that point in time, we do have the rest of the business on the agenda. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I- I'm just pooped here. Um, we do have other business. We have an executive session, and we have public hearings that really, uh, can't be postponed very well. But I think the rest of the business of the city could be postponed also until the twenty-first, with the exception of the pub- executive session. I guess that could be postponed, but- and the public hearings. Uh, Ms. Wheeler, could we postpone the executive session? Would that be timely?
I- I'd have to see if the attorney's gonna be there. Um, I don't know. I'll have to see if he can text me because he was here last time, and he's been here tonight, and- and he's got a family. So, I don't know if he's gonna be able to be here. Then, if we could get it done tonight, we certainly appreciate it. It's not gonna take that long, but, I mean, you know, I'm- I'm paying for these attorneys to be here, and- and I would appreciate it if we could do it tonight.
Okay. Well, it, you know, I think, Ms. Worthing, the answer to your question is maybe a quick executive session after this vote to postpone and the public hearings, 'cause I- I- I would be surprised if there's a lot of people to speak on that. And then the rest of the business, as far as I'm concerned, can be postponed upon a motion to December twenty-first. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I- I can- I can stay for the executive session.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this motion to reconsider the postponement? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk. We need six votes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
No.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, one no.
Eight yes, one no, the motion, uh, carries. So now, we are back to the actual motion to postpone the discussion of these- of this resolution until December twenty-first. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
No.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Vote is eight yes, one no.
Vote is eight yes, one no. This resolution on the water settlement litigation with this companion resolution will be postponed until December twenty-first. Um, so now that brings us to the executive closed session. Uh, Mr. Davis, could you take over for a few minutes? And, um, Davina, I don't know that I have a- do we have a number to go into closed session? Has it been emailed to us?
Um, yeah, to Davina. Um, yeah, it was e- it was emailed earlier, and I also texted it to the people that I normally text information to. But I wanna point out that the meeting is scheduled to end at nine-thirty, the conference. Um, so if- if we can't end by nine-thirty, I'll have to redo a whole new number.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you. Well, uh, Mr. Davis, would you take over the vote on going into closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I will return.
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
Yes, Councilman Wilson.
Yeah, could I ask Davina to text to me the- the, uh, closed session number, please?
Um, ma- uh, Mr. Vice President, this is Davina.
Yes, Dee.
Uh, yeah, I- I texted it- I would've texted it to you, um, right before the meeting started, probably.
I don't- I don't see it.
Okay, I'll resend it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Davina. Okay, at this time, uh, could I inter- the motion about going into executive session?
Madam- I mean, Mr. Vice President.
Councilman Mays, Councilman Mays.
Can- maybe you wanna let, um, Angela qualify first as to what we going into for the motion?
Thank you, Councilman Mays. Attorney Wheeler?
Yes, thank you. The city attorney's asked to request a closed session for purposes of discussing any little civil litigation, and since having a limited meeting would have a detrimental effect, we would request, um, maybe a matter of, well, versus city of funding case number two, um, colon eighteen CB one-two-seven-five-five, and that's pursuant to, uh, NCL, uh, fifteen point two-six-eight B to consult with an attorney regarding trial or strategy.
Thank you, Attorney Wheeler.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President.
Councilman Mays.
Yeah, I would move that we go into executive session on the matter that's just been stated on the record and that's on our agenda for the legal reasons stated as we, um, deal with this particular litigation, and I so move.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes.
Mr. President, I second the motion.
Is it moving properly second? Uh, I don't think we got no discussion, so roll call, Janelle. Thank you.
Mr. Mays?
Our point of order.
Yes.
Yeah, you always ask. It is. If it ain't no discussion, then go. It is discussion on this, but it might not be, not yet.
Okay. I apologize. I'm trying to get in gear. Any discussion? On the motion to go into executive session, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, Janelle. Roll call.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra?
Yeah.
Ms. Fields? Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
The vote is eight to zero.
So, Mr. Vice President, we'll come back after executive session, I would guess. Um, Janelle, I guess y'all can tell the people that if they wanna hang on or come back, we should be back. See y'all later.
Yes, I'll be on the line here, and you can stay if you want. The council will come back after the executive session.
Yes.
Did you come here by mistake or did you... Uh, it's up to you.
Sure, let's have roll call. Once, once you know there's enough people on the line.
Okay. There are six.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Guera? Ms. Fields?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Mr. Greggs?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Galloway and Ms. Worthing left and I don't see Mr. Guera.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, I just want to say this before we return to the agenda. My suggestion is going to be that we just do presentation of minutes and the public hearings because if not, they have to, uh, republish those and it's expensive. But, uh, and then I'd like to postpone, um, the rest of the meeting to the 21st. But one item we did not cover is how are we going to choose an attorney to represent counsel? And who has the authority to hire? So, um, I would, uh, like to just ask that question of the body before we make a motion to postpone the rest of the business. So, okay, we're at presentation of minutes. Are there any minutes, Madam Clerk?
There are none, Madam President.
Thank you. That brings us to public hearings. The first public hearing is Q-00426.6, Public Hearing Fiscal Year 2021-Fiscal Year 2024, Vision, Mission and Goals of a Strategic Plan. The public hearing on the City of Flint, uh, vision, mission and goals of the strategic plan. Um, are there any speakers for this public hearing, Madam Clerk?
We are going to unmute everyone for each public hearing. But I, uh, if you'd like to speak, if you'd like to speak, please state your name for the record. Also note that callers will be permanently muted for using vulgar or profane language and will be temporarily muted if there's excessive background noise.
Thank you, Janelle. Proceed.
Okay.
Madam, the point of order.
What's your point of order, Mr. Mays?
I've heard I'm unmuted. Can you hear me clearly?
Could, could you hold one moment?
Can you hear me clearly?
We can hear you clearly, but I need you to hold just a moment. Can you hold a moment, Mr. Mays? What's your, what's your point of order, Mr. Mays?
I don't know if our rules allow us to permanently, you know, get rid of somebody if just for that meeting.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Is that what you meant, Janelle?
Yes. Yeah, I think you're right. Okay, so you can move ahead with the first speaker.
I was unmuted. Is it me?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, it's Andrea Watson. Good evening. Good day evening. Um, I'm calling, as you know, about this whole debacle. And I, I gotta say, I'm gonna, I have to give to Eric and...
Ms. Watson, Ms. Watson, I have to stop you there. This is a public hearing. You can only speak to the topic of a public hearing. This is not a general public speaking session.
Absolutely. Now, there's just a ton of background noise. I kind of feel like everybody's unmuted right now. Anyway, um...
They are. You can only speak regarding the vision, mission and goals of the strategic plan. Would you like to speak to that topic? I think she's gone, Janelle. Next speaker.
If there's someone else that would like to speak to this public hearing, they are, you can go now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Arthur Whitson. Can you tell me what, uh, which, which public hearing, uh, which resolution of the, uh, public hearing this is on?
This is regarding the vision, mission and goals of the strategic plan, which this public hearing unfortunately should have been quite a long while ago and we forgot to put it on the agenda because we'd had, already had discussion two months ago about the actual strategic plan. So, this is the public hearing on that.
This the one that y'all voted on that, uh, you all had to vote on? That, 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 before you took the public input, y'all voted and then y'all said, all right, right after the public hearing, y'all gonna just pass it right after that y'all don't have to vote on it again.
Mr. Whitson, I'm really not supposed to engage in dialogue with the speakers. You can just speak on the public hearing.
I'm just trying to find out if this was the one. I, I didn't know for sure if this was the one. But, uh, you know what? I won't even talk about this and I wanted to talk about the vacant property. So, I won't even discuss it. Thank you.
Okay, that's coming up. Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Next speaker, please.
Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing?
Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Hearing on this public hearing is closed. Now, we're moving on to the next one. Q-00468.6.
Hello, hello, you didn't hear me. Hello, I just got a...
Who's this?
Is there, is there...
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
You have to be quiet.
Yes, I'd like to speak at the public hearing.
You have to be quiet. You have to be quiet.
Hello, thank you, thank you for unmuting me. Thank you.
Listen to the chair or we're gonna have to mute you. That first public hearing is closed. We are now on the Q-0046...
Yes, I, I, you asked to speak at the public hearing. I, I tried to, but I just got unmuted. I, I tried to, but I just got unmuted. And then you closed the hearing.
Sir, I'm asking you to stop talking until I can read what this public hearing is about. Can you do that?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Um-
This is public hearing two zero zero four six eight point six. A public hearing regarding alley vacation fourteen fifteen slash fourteen nineteen North Dorit Highway. First speaker, would you like to speak on this public hearing only?
Uh, yes, I, I do.
Then proceed.
The, the reason I would like to speak is, um, very simple. Uh, many people- There's an awful echo. I, I can't even hear myself speak.
Could you please say your name?
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Harper was, I, I've been doing dates, uh, she wasn't even a year, year old, and, um, uh, water quality is essential. Uh, the solution is not, uh-
Sir, 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 stop. You can only speak on this public hearing. You can't speak on any other topic. This is not a general public speaking.
Yes, I'm speaking about water. It's very important.
No, sir.
The solution-
No, sir. Janelle, mute him, please.
Sorry, ma'am.
Okay, anyone who wants to speak has to know this is not general speaking time for the public. It's a public hearing specifically for the topic regarding the alley vacation of fourteen fifteen slash fourteen nineteen Dorit, North Dorit Highway. That's the only topic you can speak on at this point in time. So, would anyone like to speak on that topic?
Yes, I would like to speak on it. Uh, I don't know if this the one, uh, that, that-
Could you identify yourself, please?
Arthur Woodson. I don't know if this, uh-
Thank you.
I don't have the agenda in front of me, and I don't know if this, uh, the, the alley that's for Walgreens, but I have been seen, uh, we have been, uh, vacating and giving away streets, uh, a lot, you know? Will this, will they own this alley? And if so, why are we giving them alleys? Why are we not leasing the alley to them? Because I don't, I, like I said, I can't see the, uh, the agenda, but I know Buckingham Alley, we gave to, uh, downtown, uptown, uh, 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 reinvestment there. Why are we giving away the city, but we always talk, talking about the city's gonna fall bankrupt, but we giving it away? Every time I turn around, we giving away a street. We didn't even wanna, uh, uh, put the David family name on a street, and, and, and that was it, honorary street. But now we giving away streets, and, and I would like to know if this street is being given to them, or are we just shutting the street down so that we use it for the drive-thru? Which, I mean, what is it? I, I mean, we could at least lease it to them instead of giving it to them. And that's for all of the streets that we are vacating, because I know it's a bunch more that's getting ready to come up, or they probably even came up. Ninth, Ninth Street is tough street. So, uh, can you find that out, uh, somebody on the council? Are we giving it away? Are they, uh, just, just vacating it to where they can use it as a drive-thru? Which one is it?
I don't know. I don't know if they can.
Ms. Fields, Janelle.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to this public hearing?
Uh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Can you state your name?
My name is Robert Rollinger. Uh, I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant who's seeking to have the alleyway vacated.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, the parcel of, of property that we are looking at has street address of fourteen fifteen to fourteen nineteen North Dorit Highway, um, and the property is bisected by the fifteen foot public alleyway. It runs all the way south, um, from, uh, our property to Missouri Street. Um, at the time that we brought this matter to the planning commission, uh, it was requested by the city engineer in the city fire department to amend our request to include the balance of the public alleyway, uh, south to its terminus at Missouri Street, and we, uh, agreed to amend the petition to do so. We also contacted the one property owner who would've been in that area, a Mr. Kitsonis. Uh, I sent him a letter and provided a copy of the letter to both Ms. Kelly Thompson in your legal department, as well as to Mr. Bill Vanderkook in your planning and development department. Mr. Kitsonis, uh, did not appear either at the planning commission meeting, nor did he contact anyone that I know of in the city itself, nor myself. Uh, this, this property, uh, is going to be used to develop a new Walgreens pharmacy with a drive-through, uh, facility attached. The, uh, building is gonna be surrounded by, uh, par- a parking area to provide adequate parking for customers. Um, but the alleyway right now is literally in the center of the parcel, and because of where the, the building is gonna be situated, in order to provide enough parking, we need to have the alleyway vacated, because it literally runs right through the center of the property. So we're asking the city to allow the public alleyway to be vacated so that we can go forward with our construction plans and have the drugstore and pharmacy, uh, in the parcel.
Thank you, sir. Are you finished?
Uh, yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. That brings us to public hearing two zero zero four six one point six. Ordinance two zero zero four six one. An ordinance to amend the code of the city by amending chapter thirty five personnel, article five working conditions by amending section thirty five dash eighty nine holidays. Note, amendment adds Juneteenth to the list of holidays. Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing? Thank you, Mr. Hearing. Would anyone like, else like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Yes, uh-
State your name.
Um, hello?
State your name, please.
Um, my, my name, my, my name is, uh, if we met, uh, uh, you'd call me, I, I ask you to call me Jay. My name is Yerosav Bozpecovich. Uh, I'm calling from Genesee Township, I mean, Genesee County, uh, Genesee Township, Flint City. And, and I'm calling regarding a very important topic, uh, that we're talking about right now, which is water, correct?
No, sir. No, sir. This is not general public speaking. This is a public hearing specifically regarding ordinance two zero zero four six one. We're amending, uh, holidays to add Juneteenth to the list of city holidays. That's all you may speak on. Would you like to speak to that topic?
I wanted to speak on the, on the drive-through Walmart topic, which I believe just passed tonight. Uh, tried to talk on that. It's a topic I'm familiar with, so no, I do not wanna speak on it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone like to speak on this public hearing? Would anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. Okay, so this brings us on the agenda. Uh, we can go through quickly, uh, it's listed on the agenda, but there's nothing under them, and then we'll, we'll have that off the agenda at least. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any petitions and unofficial communications?
No, ma'am, there are not.
Are there any communications from the mayor and other city officials?
No, ma'am, there are not.
Are there any additional communications?
No, there are not.
Are there any appointments?
No appointments.
Are there any licenses?
There are no licenses, Madam President.
Thank you. That brings us now to resolutions continued, but, um, I would like to ask counsel, uh, if they would be willing to take a minute, we have to settle an issue, um, tonight, and I'll, I'll hear the will of the body, uh, but before we move into that, even though it's not technically on the agenda, the question is, counsel has voted to retain the services of an independent attorney, but, and to have it expedited, but we did not state how we are, who has the authority to choose this?
Point of order, Madam President.
Um, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, let's, um, formally postpone the agenda, and then you can do that, you know, under-
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, your motion.
Madam President, I would move, let me look at it. Just give me a second. Okay, I would move that we postpone the remaining resolutions and the, um, a remaining, um, introduction and first reading of ordinances and second reading and special orders, um, and the, um, listed discussion items until Monday, and add them on the Monday agenda, and I so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Uh, is there a second?
Monday, December twenty first.
Is there a second? Mr. Griggs?
I second.
It's been moved to the second. Is, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call on the vote to postpone everything that's left on the agenda, resolutions through discussion items. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Mays?
I stopped after the discussion items listed. I still left additional discussion items final.
Correct.
Counsel comes. Okay.
Correct. Okay. Um, roll call, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, are you there?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr., I was muted. Mr. Davis? Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Mays? That's six yes, zero no.
Madam President.
Martin carries. Mr. Mays?
Yeah, before you get in, yeah, be- before you get into what you wanted to, I wanna call your attention to the agenda that I got today, these, that, these special orders. Let me look at the discussion item. Um, that discussion, okay, I see it to seven oh two Kenwood. Okay, I'm okay. Thanks.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional discussion items? Because if, if they don't, you're right, Mr. Mays, this was the right place for me to bring it up. Okay, once again, counsel voted to obtain independent attorney, um, or counsel, but we didn't decide how we're going to make the decision, uh, or who has the authority to hire that law firm. And I, I had one suggestion I'll throw out, and I'd like to hear from the body. Maybe we can appoint an ad hoc committee, maybe with three members, so we don't have to have a public meeting, and those three members can come to some consensus on what law firm to hire. What say the body?
Madam President?
Mr. Winfrey?
Yeah, you may wanna do two members, because three members might constitute, uh, a council meeting, and then you'd have to open it up to the public, so I would recommend-
Oh.
-two-member meeting, and I'll tell you who I would like to have on that committee.
Yes, sir.
I would like to have Councilman Mays and yourself.
Well, thank you, Mr. Winfrey. I would be willing to serve, Councilman Mays. Would you?
Um, in all humor, as long as we can do it from a distance on the phone. No, I'm just kidding, I would be glad to serve.
Hey, we're making history on this, this issue, Mr. Mays, and, and I truly hope we can continue this collaborative experience. My bond is holding.
Madam President, may I say, may I say this just briefly?
Yes.
And, and, and I chose you two, not, 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 you know, uh, saying that other council persons can't, but I like the probing questions that you and Councilman Mays have in other discussions, and I like the way you get into things. This is why I'm saying, and I've always said, people don't know the talent that we have on this, on this committee, on this council, and I just admire that kind of talent, and I like to sit and listen to it, so I, I would really, that's why I said that. That was, Councilman, that wasn't a joke. I, I really think that we've got two good minds, uh, to, to, to look at these attorneys that we're gonna hire. Thank you, ma'am.
This is Angela, may I say something?
Buttering up, Mr. Winfrey. Uh, who wants to speak?
Angela Wheeler.
Ms. Wheeler.
Um-
Go ahead.
I don't have a problem talking to you and Councilman Mays about, um, an attorney, but there's supposed to be some boundaries to make sure that we're not stepping over each other, because of the way that the charter, the folks who prepare the charter that was adopted in two thousand eighteen, it has certain things that it directs to the city attorney to do, which is to manage and direct those matters, um, in, that are in the interest of the mayor, the city council, and also in the best interest of the city. So, in times before, when, um, I used to work with Scott Kincaid and, and other council members, um, during previous council, when there was a discussion about who would be, um, if, if the council, there was a conflict that came up, then what would happen is that three names would be submitted, because, because one, you, you can't direct the legal affairs of the city from the council, but the other thing is two, I, I think there's a simple way to work through this, to have some parameters, so we don't conflict with those who are already representing the city, which means the council too. So, um, I'd be more than happy to marle, to spend some time with you both to work through this, so we don't, um, have a issue that, that would become bigger than necessary. And, and I, and I think that I have, I've had an opportunity to appreciate, um, more of the dialogue tonight, so I think I have a way- so I think I have a way of, of, uh, helping with that, but not interfering with the obligations that I have for the, for the city. So, I, I would offer that to you, um, if you want to set up some time, I have time in the morning, um, you know, from eight to ten thirty, and I've got time in the afternoon after my ten thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler, understood, but I think first, we have to actually establish this ad hoc committee, and, um, I believe the council president, um, is allowed to do that, um, through the council rules. Um, but, so I first wanted to make, I wanted to first make sure that Mr. Mays is willing to sit on this committee. I'm willing to sit on it. What say you, Mr. Mays?
Let's, let's do it.
Okay, and are you in agreement that, uh, we can make some time to speak with Ms. Wheeler tomorrow? So she can convey what she wants to convey, and then you and I can also speak.
Yeah, I've got a little history with, um, you know, what she referred to as submitting three names. I wouldn't give it was three, four, or five, whether she had some, we had some, and so forth and so on. So, you know, I'm always willing to give that courtesy. But then, at the same time, it wouldn't matter if, uh, my colleagues or anybody referred people to us, and we check them out and vet them and put them on the list or whatever. So, Ms. Wheeler, who's making this proposed list that you're referring to? Is it a combination of us and you, or you, or what are you saying?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I apologize, I didn't hear clearly.
Yeah, um, as we, um, get information on lawyers that specialize and know this type of stuff, um, believe me, I've already ducked this up out of Indiana, but my question to you is, in your scenario, who's putting this list of three together? You, us, a combination, between us? What is you saying?
Well, certainly, I can come up with my own name because of all the litigation that we do, but, um, but the point being is that the council would come up with three names, and, and we would look at those two. But the main thing is that, you know, like I said, we, we, we want to make sure as the council and the city are on the same side of the litigation, that we don't cause an issue with that. So like I said, we could talk tomorrow more depth, um, you know, and, and make sure you have, have somebody there while you're, uh, talking to the AG, things like that, but we gotta make sure that we do things that are collaboratively within the best interest of the city. So, um, like I said, again, the, the direction of the legal affairs comes out of the law department on behalf of the city, and so, like I said, we can work together, work through that. I mean, like I said, I'll have, I'm sure I'll have plenty of names, but I'm sure you will too.
Can I say this, Madam President, and then I'll be quiet, seem like we're on some type of track, and I'm sure you and I will talk. And even Ms. Wheeler, if we have to meet, you know, we've been doing fines, you know, in some cases by phone, but I'll come out if need be. But, you know, this is a tough time for old folks in that COVID nineteen, but whatever we'll do, I'll do it. And so my position is this, when you talk about the charter, when Ms. Galloway read the right, it's something in this charter that I want to call your attention to. I remember Scott Kincaid, Mayor, and the city attorney's office, but this new charter, if you look at the clauses, it gave a balance to the mayor and the administration and the council. Now council has an opportunity to judge and look at the city attorney. And if you look at that clause, you really got a balance in that, because it ain't just the mayor who can scrutinize and look and keep or get rid of the city attorney. Read the language of the new council power. So I hear y'all talking, and I hear what's going on, but I want you to know, the new charter makes the city attorney a little more accountable to both the executive branch and the legislative branch, different from what it was when Mr. Kincaid and him was there. And I just wanted to shed light on that difference.
No, I, I appreciate that, and I follow the... Yes.
Well, I will let you proceed, but what I, we're not quite there yet. What I am looking for is a motion from this council to give the ad hoc committee the authority to choose the firm that will represent us on these water litigations, taking into consideration your counsel about conflicts of interest. So I'm looking for an actual motion here.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Phil.
Yeah, Madam President?
Yes.
I wouldn't feel comfortable making the motion this early until we have something that we can bring, and then let the council decide as well, than just us.
Well, there, there's that factor, but here's the other factor. We don't have a council meeting until the, well, it's Monday. I guess it's not that long away. Um, I want us to be able to get this attorney very fast, as fast as possible. So if you think it's necessary to bring our recommendations to council, okay, because that'll be Monday, and hopefully we'll be able to do that by Monday. I don't know. You see where I'm going?
Yeah, I don't either, but if we have to, because today is Thursday, I don't think we'd call a special meeting for Saturday or Friday, but the thing is this, I think that we really gotta try to include them on that decision-making along with Ms. Wheeler, anybody else. And then, um, you know, if something is going wrong, and we can't introduce somebody by then to get their approval, their comparisons, then we would have to move real fast.
Okay, well, Mr. Mays, I, I don't think, I mean, council is fatigued. I don't think we'll be able to, to get a meeting between now and Monday. But if you want to wait till Monday for us to bring our recommendations to council and have them approve, approve it then, I'm willing to do that. Okay?
Let's see what we can do. Hopefully we'll have somebody.
Yeah, I hope so too. Okay, um, are there any, uh, additional discussion items?
Um, Madam President?
And Mr. Mays?
I would just say this, as the first vaccine was administered in the City of Flint, and even though we put it off to Monday, it's a reason that we need to talk about our COVID nineteen policies and the employees and all of that, essential workers, and, I mean, all of that. So I'll wait till Monday, but I could not, not bring it up because it's such a pressing, big issue, just as it is for me with the water litigation. So, I look forward with the Monday or anything we have to do to clear up our agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Mays, and I'll remind you that we do have that as a special order for Monday's agenda. Okay, uh, if there are no other additional discussion items, let's go to final council comments. Um, let's, well, let's start with you, Mr. Mays. I know you're still here.
Yeah, well, I would say if, um, I might get on Mondays and pray for the city and pray for understanding, and, um, you know, pray for civility. I've been watching people, uh, particularly, Mr. Davis, if you can hear me, I do get calls and I review those podcasts, and I hear the analogy that I help bring lawyers in, and I did, and that I'm in a car and have helped negotiate the details of this settlement. That could be far, that's far from the truth. These negotiations went on for months and weeks. Carl Levin, people from the court, the state attorneys. I wasn't in the car, in the negotiations. I'm seeing them for the first time. That's not true. I don't appreciate you and, um, your wife trying to convince people that I'm somebody who I'm not. Um, and so that's what I do. I just lay back, look, I listen at people talk. I say what, listen to what they say, and then I react to it. So I want to tell the residents of the City of Flint, don't listen to that mess. It's not true. It's fabricated. It's made up. Um, but you can call me at any time, and I'll talk to you individually, and I'll talk as a group. It looks like we are moving in a certain direction to try to do the best thing for the city. I already know that this, um, water settlement is something that I can't sign on to in its present form. It doesn't take care of the residents, and then I'm look, I, I, I really want to discuss and try to prove to my colleagues that when you get rid of your insurance policy, that's what makes us have to do tax levies. And I'm gonna keep saying, we shouldn't be putting twenty million with the state, and they were at fault. They should be putting twenty million with our insurance policy. But I'll say that for another day. God bless the citizens of the City of Flint and pastors, even my pastor. I don't mean to offend y'all, but I think I know a little more detail about this settlement than the pastors. And some instances, there might be some brilliant ones might know more than me. But I can guarantee you this, I bet you y'all know the Bible better than I do. God bless you pastors, keep praying for me, I pray for you, and I'll be praying for the citizens of the City of Flint. Come on, Flint, come on, residents, let's organize and make these objections in large numbers, and you would be surprised what the judge will look and listen to before final approval of a settlement that might be a little too tough for us. Okay, thank you. God bless the citizens of the City of Flint.
All right, Mr. Davis, final council comment?
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam President. One thing I'd like to say is this, this misinformation that's going through the community is disheartening. Only thing I take that podcast to do is put absolute truth out there, as I know it. Now, Councilman Mays is on the bitter side. I don't know why they keep doing that when I'm only responding to what happened on, like he used to tell me, messing around with Threlle Kellam on the radio. Leave my name out your mouth and do right by the residents. We're defenders in this city. And I'm trying to protect the residents. And people quit the politics twenty twenty-one election. I'm not going nowhere unless the residents vote me out. Truth later on down the road. But I will say this, as defenders, we stand a good chance to lose everything. I take heed to our own council, meaning our legal department. We got the best, and we pay them hundreds of thousands of dollars. Why not utilize that instead of getting one person? It's gonna be very interesting to me how super attorney gonna come and stand against a five-year experience of a law team that City of Flint have vested law team, by the way. Absolute Angela Wheeler and them is the best. Now, they work for the city. Down the road, this city, some kind of way, put the cart before the horse. We can object, you can, uh, abstain, you can appeal, you can opt out after we join with our insurance to cover the city and this liability. How hard is that? My job to miss, this misinformation that's out in the community as well is, uh, uh, articulating what the attorneys have stated over and over and over again, until this body quit fighting against the administration and see. The mayor has said it, but it's not good enough. So, quit infighting and tell the truth. Am I accurate on everything Mays do? No. But the one thing I don't do is I don't just sit out to destroy Mays and nobody else. I try to get information in the community, because these people are older and they retired. They deserve to keep their house without being taxed off, taxed out of their house with misinformation. And it's, it's, it's very disheartening with this infighting instead of unifying. People, we are not the ones that, we have no say over this so-called settlement. Only thing we supposed to did tonight was make sure we put everybody on this umbrella of security that all these lawsuits and settlements that's out there, other plaintiffs, don't come, and, and, and bankrupt the city as well as these residents, just like Councilman Maurice Da- D. Davis stated. Anybody could sound political and, and, and politic, anybody. I'm not out there to do that. I use that polit, my podcast to put real information out there. That's why nothing, if you notice, community, nothing got done today. Why? Because I told you the absolute truth, and thank you for indulging, Madam President.
Point of in, point of information.
Mr. Mays? What is your point of information?
Um, my, 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 my quick request is this, um, and it's a question, it's a point of information. Mr. Davis, is it really fair for you, Trump, me, Biden, Weaver, Neely, is it really fair for any elected official to be saying constantly, keep yo, my, keep your mouth off my name, or whatever you're saying? This the business we in. People talk about us.
All right, Mr. Mays, you've moved beyond, you've moved beyond a point of information.
I'm asking him if it's fair to keep saying that. We gonna be talked about. You, me, Biden, Trump, that's, that ain't nothing to keep saying.
You're moving beyond, we've done so well here, you're moving far beyond a point of information. And, Mr. Davis, you can respond if you want, but you don't have to. If you don't wish to respond, I'd like to move on.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. And Janelle, are you timing these two minutes?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Are you timing these two minutes each?
Yeah, I am.
Thank you. All right, uh, then we move to Mr. Greer. Are you on the line? Is he here? All right, uh, then we'll move on to Ms. Carrie Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I just want to, um, say, um, Mr. Davis, I did hear what you said, that you are putting out accurate information. Are you really putting out accurate information? Because I receive emails every day about the information that you're putting out. And I would hope that at some point you would stop and research the things that you are speaking on, and then put out the accurate information.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
Now, with that being said, um, I would like to, um, say...
Just a moment, Ms. Winfrey Carter, I have to recognize a point of information.
Okay.
What is your point of information, Mr. Davis?
Do my colleagues not know if you seen, I got every document that I read verbatim off for record? Thank you.
Ms. Winfrey Carter, you can respond if you want, you don't have to.
Um, Mr. Davis, are you reading, reading your documents with, um, some level of comprehension? So, anyway, I'm gonna go on, I'm gonna move on.
Point of information, Madam Chair.
No, no, no. Counsel, you're turning final council comments into dialogue between council members.
They need to keep their name off of me.
And that's not what it's supposed to be. Could you just finish up, Ms. Winfrey Carter? I don't know how much time you have, probably a minute left.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, you should keep our names out of your mouth as well. Now, I would like to thank the residents for engaging in this council meeting tonight, and I would like to thank my colleagues. I think we had, uh, a, a very good meeting tonight, and, and I'm looking, um, looking forward to the collaboration of, um, Councilman Mays and Councilwoman, um, Phil. And Councilwoman Phil, I would like to compliment you on a, um, well-run meeting tonight. And, 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 and your mood was just joyful. I, I enjoyed you tonight. So, thank you. Have a great night.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Winfrey?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm good. I don't have any, uh, comments. Just thankful to all of my, uh, all of my colleagues. Thank you.
I believe, uh, Councilwoman Galloway had to leave the meeting. She wasn't feeling well. Uh, that brings us to Mr. Griggs, Councilman Griggs. Are you still there?
No, I don't believe he is.
Okay, uh, I think Councilwoman Worthing left. Is she off the line?
Yeah, she's off the line.
Okay, then it just ends up with me. I just want to say... Okay, then it just ends up with me. I just wanna say, I'm really glad that these meetings are moving along better. But I have to tell you, one of the reasons is because we're kind of in agreement on some issues. Even when we're not in agreement on issues, I would hope we can move this along the way these have been, which is, in my opinion, a little more professional. So, um, that's all I have, and I guess I'd just like to request a motion to adjourn.
Madam President.
Mr. Mays?
Now, you know if I vote no, we'll be here all night, so I'll move to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Is there a second?
Madam President?
And Mr. Winfrey?
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. There's no discussion, no debate. Roll call on adjournment.
Ms. Fields?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Just kidding, yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no.
Five yes, zero no, we are adjourned until December twenty first. Good evening.